Sounds good.
I'd like to call this September 1st session of the Hoyoke City Council to order. The clerk will call the roll and record those members present.
Alexander.
Here.
Burtley.
Here.
Resnahan. Shetanoff.
Here.
Graney. Jordane.
Here.
Leahy.
Present.
LeBron Martinez. Lisi.
Here.
McGee.
McGivern.
Here.
Soto. Tomlin.
Here.
Bacon.
Here.
Valentine.
Here.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
God bless the city of Hoyoke.
And the city council.
As you know, we get to honor a number of really important guests from time to time as a city council and to honor individuals who have made extreme contributions, incredible contributions to the community. And tonight is certainly no exception. I'm really honored on behalf of the entire body to welcome Counselor Leahy to invite in our guests, our esteemed guests from Hoyoke High School, led by Mark Todd, Kate Hebert, and Kevin Bouchard as the coaches of this year's champion as Schools Match Wits team. Welcome! It's been fifty years since Hoyoke, I believe, the creation of the Collamore Cup. And for Hoyoke to win this title, fifty-four years, that is just an awesome feat. And we could not be more proud. And we could not be more proud that it happened to happen against Long Meadow, of all places. Although, we have great respect for Long Meadow. I will say, just as myself, as a former grad of Hoyoke High, as an alum of this great institution, which you will soon be someday an alum of, we could not be more proud. And really, our hats off to you. Now, I'd like to turn the podium over to Counselor Leahy.
Jeez, what else is there left to say? Maybe you should have filed the order. However, I did. And I would like to, first of all, say congratulations. As a proud member of the class of 1992, I bleed purple. I think about the Hoyoke nights daily. My son is now in his second day at Hoyoke High School. We're very excited about that. But this is, just to correct Counselor President, it's been fifty-four years since this has been going on. And it's the first time that the city of Hoyoke has won this. And we beat Long Meadow, which I think is a fantastic thing, okay? One of the things I'm more proud of is the fact that this is a full season. This isn't a contest that lasts two weeks, six weeks. This is a full year. And after the season is done, they have to continue because they're not sure if they're gonna make the playoffs or not. So this is a very long season. And I couldn't do it, so I'm very proud of these kids. It went into three overtimes. The first overtime was 2:20 to 2:20. The second one was 2:45 to 2:45. And finally, Hoyoke came out on top at 2:75 to 2:70. This was a very impressive night. It was fun to watch. I had the kids and my wife sitting alongside of me. And what, one of the reasons that any team always wins is the forgotten person usually. It's the coach. And in this case, the coach is Mark Todd. Mark Todd is known to the city of Hoyoke, three coaches, Mrs. Quirk over there too, or formerly Quirk. I'm gonna bring Mark Todd in to introduce everybody. But I just want to say once again how excited and proud I am of this team. Thank you so much.
Well, the one thing that we bleed is purple, that's true. And we're extremely proud of our kids as well. But I think the thing that we miss all the time about our kids is that, you know, Hoyoke gets a lot of negative press sometimes about some very unusual things. But they never really look at our kids. They don't see our kids the way we see them. I've been in the Hoyoke Public Schools now for eighteen years. I've enjoyed every moment of it. It's been a pleasure. I've watched all four of my own children come through the Hoyoke Public Schools. They're all doing great. And only because of the training that they got in the Hoyoke Public Schools. The negative things that we have heard about the Hoyoke Public Schools, I'm sure there's negatives that exist, but there's so many positives that are going on all the time that just get missed. I mean, people just don't see them, or they just don't want to see them, or we're just not in the right place at the right time, I guess. But this time, we looked at these kids, and you can look at them right now because we see them every day. We said, you know, we got the stake on our back. They want to come in and take us over. There's a lot of things happening there. And with all the things that have been going on previously, I said, we're gonna put all this on your shoulders and we're gonna let you carry it. And they looked at me and they said, "No pressure, Mr. Todd, no pressure at all." Of course, Mr. Bouchard then would be making a joke about it, and then we'd be all set. But it's, Mr. Bouchard is a phenomenal teacher. Mrs. Hebert is a phenomenal teacher. And, you know, the work that they do with their kids is unbelievable. And Mr. Bouchard has the AP European History. How many kids in AP European History scored fives on their tests this year? That's a high.
I was two, but that's believe it or not, that's good.
Yeah, that's great. I mean, phenomenal amount of positive things going on in his AP course and our kids as well in that end of it. Mrs. Hebert does so many freshman classes of English, and she looks forward to it. She loves having the freshmen. I don't know how many teachers love having freshmen, but she does. And she does a phenomenal job with them. Her daughter now is at Yale and a Hoyoke High School graduate, phenomenal, bright young lady who was valedictorian. So it's, we have so many great things happening in our school, and we're very happy for them. I'd like to introduce the folks now, and I'm gonna call up the coaches because I want them to speak. So I want to start with, we'll start with right here on my direct right. This is Patrick Morrison. Next him is Maggie Brady. Next to her is Emma Price. And Nick, what's the capital of Colombia? There you go. So, we did a funny thing. This is, we're gonna introduce Nick in a second. It's just that I had to mention this. We just decided, I bet he doesn't know all the capitals of all the countries in the world. And he did. And he just spit them out in a couple of seconds. So I mean, like going, okay, then we're good, we're good. So, Nick Edwards. Now, I'd like to have our, Mrs. Hebert, would you come up? I want you to say some words. She loves to talk.
I just wanted to thank all of you for inviting us. I'm a Hoyoke High alum also, class of seventy-six, before some of you were born. I was also an alternate on a Schools Match Wits. So it's great to see the pride that Hoyoke seems to feel for the team this year when people stop me at the gym and they stop me at Stop and Shop. And I don't know who they are, but they're like, these kids were great. And if you ever need a little feel-good moment, you can go back and watch the match online. I do that and watch the last five minutes and makes my day. So thank you very much.
She didn't tell you she was also a Colleen? Mr. Bouchard.
I was not a Colleen. I used to be a Northampton guy until about eight years ago. And eight years ago, I pretty much became a Hoyoke resident. I've been living here for eight years. I've been teaching at the high school for eleven. I guess I would just like to say it's been an honor to teach such a talented team. I'm tired of hearing all the things, all the negative. The catchphrase now is pockets of excellence. They say at Hoyoke High, there's pockets of excellence. Well, we have some pretty deep pockets, I'll tell you that much right now. So one side note, because two people getting a five on the exam doesn't sound that impressive, so I'll tell you something more impressive. The two people that got the five on the exam, which is as high as you can get, were both on the team, Brendan Kelly and Nick Edwards. And twenty-three other kids also passed that exam. So that's, I mean, that's pretty solid. So definitely big pockets at Hoyoke High School.
Three of the students who are not here, I wanted to mention their names, and one was just mentioned, but I'll get a nice round of applause for him as he's at Holy Cross right now, and that's Brendan Kelly. And Eric Pasternak is not here tonight. And Joseph Kavanaugh.
Well, before anybody goes anywhere, we've got some nice proclamations to memorialize this evening, which is to memorialize your great accomplishment. And I would like to read one of these proclamations, and we have one for each and every single one of you. First one is to Hoyoke High School as well as to the coaches, which we're asking that if you could make the necessary arrangements to have this hung at Hoyoke High School, we would greatly appreciate it. And it says that the Hoyoke City Council, be it resolved that the Hoyoke City Council extends its congratulations to Hoyoke High School in recognition of teachers Mark Todd, Kate Hebert, and Kevin Bouchard, who coached the 2015 Schools Match Wits team to an undefeated victory. And be it further resolved that the Hoyoke City Council extends its best wishes for continued success and that this resolution be duly signed by the President of the City Council and attested to thereof in a copy transmitted by the Clerk of the City of Hoyoke, signed by myself, Kevin Jordane, as President of the City Council, and Brenna Murphy-McGee as the Clerk of the City of Hoyoke. And we welcome you and we thank you so much for this great accomplishment. Congratulations. Our champions. The rest of the evening's gonna be pretty mundane after that, unfortunately. So colleagues, we begin. Item number one laid on the table is an item related to classification and compensation schedules.
Make a motion to keep on the table?
Well, we could just leave as is unless there's a motion to remove it. Okay, hearing none, we move on to public comment. I did not see anybody that had signed up for public comment. There are no names on the list. And therefore, we move forward to item number two.
Motion to take up two through five. Second. Package reappointments.
Second. Five.
Thank you, got it. Motion on the floor to suspend the rules to take up items number two through five as a package. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Item number two. Item number two is a communication from the mayor. It's a letter reappointing Beth Strikars of 25 Woodland Street to serve as a member of the Fairfield Avenue Historic District Commission. Ms. Strikars will serve a three-year term. Said term will expire July 1st, 2018. Item number three is a communication from the mayor. He is reappointing Peter Papino of 67 Edward Drive to serve as a member of the Fairfield Avenue Historic District Commission. Mr. Papino will serve a three-year term. Said term will expire July 1st, 2018. Item number four is also a communication from the mayor. He is seeking to reappoint Terry Murphy to serve as a Commissioner of the Park and Rec. Mr. Murphy will serve a three-year term. Said term will expire June 30th, 2018. Item number five is a communication from the mayor. In it, he seeks to reappoint twelve commissioners to serve as members of the Council on Aging. They will each serve a one-year term. Said terms will expire August 28th, 2016. Is there a motion on these?
Motion approved.
Okay, motion is to suspend the rules to approve the, to receive all of these and to confirm all of the appointments. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second, under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Mr. President, item number, item number five on the Commissioners of the Council on Aging is the, the letter reads that they're all incumbents, and it's all twelve are reappointments?
That's what they're saying. And it's actually, one, two, three, four, six, seven, eight, yes, twelve. And they're saying that these are all reappointments, Joe. I could just quickly read through the names.
I have the names.
Oh, do you?
I recognize some of them. I would just make the amendment that we, the motion to adopt would be for reappointments only.
Okay. In the event that one of these is a new appointment, then we will ask that they come into committee. Okay? Is that, and that amendment is on the floor and has been seconded? Any discussion of the amendment? Hearing none, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye. Mr. President?
So moved. Okay, so just so we're knowing, noting here that all reappointments are what's on the floor. If somebody would by chance happen to not already be an incumbent, this confirmation vote will not continue for them. Continuing under discussion, Counselor Alexander.
Thanks. Could you just read the names into the record for the people at home?
Yeah, be happy to. Sure. Addresses as well?
Just the names.
Sure, okay. Susan Aiken of 359 Linden Street. Now, mind you, these are Commissioners for the Council on Aging. Elizabeth Crowell of 673 West Cherry Street. Cynthia Archer of 88 Columbus Avenue. Jacqueline Brown Hazard of 254 Walnut Street. Barbara Sprega of 121 West King Street. Julita Rojas of 337 Sargent Street, Apartment Two Right. Norma Bagnell, 169 Sycamore Street. Kong Cruz, 107 Martin Street. Judith Bascom, 24 Myrtle Avenue. Margaret Sickop, 328 West Franklin Street. Deborah Dominguez, 90 Beacon Avenue. Brian Fitzgerald, 233 Sargent Street. Those are your twelve nominees.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, counselors? Hearing none, all in favor of adopting items two, three, four, and five with the caveat that these are all being reappointments? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So moved. We now move to item number six. Item number six comes to us from Irma Lopez, the Assistant City Clerk, as well as Ryan Allen, our Administrative Assistant to the City Council. These are the minutes of our City Council meeting of August 4th.
Motion accept.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in second to receive and approve the minutes of August 4th. Any discussion? Counselor McGivern.
Page six, Mr. President, a possible amendment. I may be reading it wrong, but on the roll call vote pertaining to, pertaining to the item with the Counselor Valentine's order with the Office School Street Owens Place, the vote was two to ten against. I'm reading this as saying it was in favor and adopted and approved by the mayor? The ordinance was passed to be ordained and adopted?
The motion was to give leave to withdraw, so that's what I believe was approved, two to ten, ten to two.
But we...
Yeah, but if it was given leave to withdraw, this states that the ordinance was passed to be ordained and adopted on a call of the rolls of yays and nays.
And the minutes reflect that we took the ordinance, you know, the first reading, the second reading, and to be enrolled before we did this.
The ordinance passed its second, I believe we took it all the way to a final vote, Joe. We did, in fact. And we had it past second reading. It was enrolled, considered the same, true and properly enrolled. We then took final adoption on this for it to be adopted, and it was not adopted, as we know. It was defeated. So the ordinance was, should say, we should amend the word to say passed to defeated. And obviously, we should delete the words approved by the mayor because he can't approve things that we defeat. So are you suggesting an amendment?
I'm making an amendment, Mr. President, just to clarify the vote.
Well, that's a good catch because that's a light and night and day difference. Ordinance, so on page six, Counselor McGivern proposes that we change the word, the ordinance was passed to the ordinance was defeated, and also to delete the words approved by the mayor. Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President?
Yes, Counselor Alexander.
How do we ensure that, I mean, changing the minutes is great, but how do we make sure that that didn't accidentally go through as something that did get signed by the mayor? Is that, I mean, I realize the clerk's sitting right here, but I don't know what the process would be to double check that.
I would hope that we're not presenting defeated items to the mayor.
I would hope not too.
But we'll ask the clerk to just look into it for us, and she'll report back.
Thank you.
Thank you. You can just maybe call me tomorrow or whatever. Okay, thank you. All right. So on Counselor McGivern's amendment, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Anything else on the minutes? Okay. Motion on the floor is that they be received and approved as amended? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number seven. Item number seven is a communication from the Assistant City Solicitor, Kara Cunha. She has a brief, one paragraph statement. It's addressed to Mr. Lumbras. It says enclosed, "Please find a copy of the order recently adopted by the City Council requesting that you return any pay you receive from the city of Hoyoke as treasurer after you began full-time employment for Loomis Communities. In accordance with the city charter, as ten days have passed since it was presented to the mayor and no veto was issued, the order is effective. Thank you for your consideration of this matter." And the Law Department, Kara, sent him a copy of the adopted order.
Motion to receive?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to receive. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number eight. Item number eight is a communication from Jeff Burkott. This is a letter, as you know, Jeff works for the Planning Department. And this is a letter regarding site plan review, a special permit to exceed the fence height, a special permit for multiple signs, and stormwater authority regarding Gary Rome at 150 Whiting Farms Road.
We received.
Okay, motion's been made and, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, that this be received? Any discussion? Do we need to refer this?
Should send it somewhere, but...
Want to send it to ordinance?
Let's send it to ordinance for now.
Okay. Motion on the floor has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second to refer to ordinance. So motion on the floor now is receive and refer to ordinance. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number nine. Item number nine is the minutes of the June 25th HEDIC meeting.
Second.
Do we want to take that as a package with ten?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to suspend our rules to take up item number ten as well and join it as a package. This is the Board of Fire Commission minutes of July 20th and August 3rd. And just so I'm clear, the motion is to receive both of these?
Yes.
Yep. Under discussion, Counselor Leahy.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions regarding the minutes of the HEDIC, and I see that Marcos is present.
Okay.
So I'm not sure if I should vote against taking up as a package or if I should continue.
Can be under discussion under the package.
Well, we can separate it as, generally, as a professional courtesy, we usually go by unanimous consent on that. Would you prefer it not be part of the package?
No, it doesn't matter. I still have a question.
Do you have a specific question regarding some of the minutes?
Well, I don't see an update on the development at Hampden and Pleasant Street. And as you know, that's the area that I live in, and there's a lot of questions regarding that. So we have Marcos in the house. I thought it might be apropos to have him come up and give us a two-minute response.
Okay.
Third.
Motion's been made and seconded to suspend our rules to allow Mr. Marrero to approach the City Council to give a two- to three-minute presentation on Hampden and Pleasant Street and presumably to answer any Counselor's questions if there happen to be any. All in favor of suspending the rules for this purpose?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Marcos, could you give us an update and kind of where we are with things with Hampden and Pleasant?
Sure. The Hampden and Pleasant property is under contract with Quabin Development Group. They have proposed a gas station with convenience store on the site. They, it's been about ten months since that proposal was approved by the HEDIC. They are trying to secure a tenant at this time. That's all.
Thank you, thank you.
Anything further? Any other questions? Counselor McGivern?
Not a question, but just to point out to everybody, the minutes is the beginning of the transition of HEDIC, which I think we are going to be wanting to pay close attention to over the next several months. HEDIC has been asked, and this board has asked HEDIC to eventually, to either combine or dissolve with the redevelopment authority itself. There's some complicated issues. Eventually, the City Council will have to take a vote on it. But this is just the beginning of what should be a very good debate over the next several months.
Very good. Anything else? Okay, all in favor? Okay, is anything relative to the Board of Fire Commission minutes as well? Has everybody had an opportunity to read those? If not, hopefully you'll take a moment to go through that as well as the HEDIC minutes. If not tonight, at another time. Motion on the floor currently is that these be received. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Items nine and 10 are received. Brings us now to item 11. Item 11 is a petition. This is the petition of Brad Matthews Jewelers for a new second-hand license to be located at 2225 North Hampton Street.
Received, refer to committee on finance.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive the petition, refer it to the Finance Committee. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number 12. Item number 12 is a petition of Bell Atlantic Mobile of Massachusetts Corporation Limited doing business as the Verizon Wireless for two new antennas on top of a, excuse me, on top of a roof located at 1 Country Club Road.
Received and sent to ordinance?
Okay.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive this item and to refer it to the Ordnance Committee. Any discussion? Counselor Bartley?
Just want to welcome Springfield City Council President Mike Fenton here to the chambers tonight. So Mike, always welcome, good to see you.
Welcome, Counselor. Good to see you. Well, it's not every day you have the Springfield City Council President here.
I'm just teasing. I'm friends with Michael back there.
He's here with his Verizon hat on. Leave him alone.
Okay, all right.
I'm friends with Michael, I'm teasing.
When you're president, you're always the president, right?
That's right.
That's a good one.
Does this, this permit does require a...
Do I have a nicer podium than you do, Michael? I don't know. Okay, very good, very good. The trappings of office.
Special permit require a public hearing?
Huh?
Requires a public hearing?
Yes.
I would think so, yes. I would think so, yeah. All right, without further ado, motion on the floor is to receive and refer all of this over to the Ordnance Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. President's Report. I don't, I think at this point, I gave a pretty extensive President's Report at the last meeting, so I think we can forego that for this evening. I think we can, everything's under control. Unless there's any particular questions on anything that happens.
I'll say.
Wonderful, wonderful. All right.
Mr. President? Could I make a quick announcement?
Yes, Counselor Bartley.
Because usually, we do the announcements after you do your President's Report.
Sure, yes, yes.
So just following the order here. So I sent an email, I think earlier today, to all of you here, but just to kind of say for the folks that are watching at home. For the first, for the first time in many, many years, the city of Hoyoke is not going to have the Puerto Rican Parade and Festival. We've talked about this briefly here. The community organizers that were responsible for the planning of this decided that they were no longer going to do that. So there's a group of folks that include myself that are working on trying to get some things back next year, but really, there wasn't any, there wasn't enough time to pull something together for this year, so. So because we're not having a Puerto Rican Parade or Festival here in the city of Hoyoke this year, we have been collaborating with the folks in Springfield, and they've been doing a great job. Their event is on Sunday, September 13th, which happens to be the same day, as Counselor Shetanoff pointed out, as the annual foot pursuit. So I understand that some of you will be participating at that. But we have been invited to march there as a contingent. And so I've reached out to a couple of groups in the city, together with Andrew Melendez, the Boys and Girls Club, Girls Inc., Hoyoke High, Dean Tech, to see if we can have some representation from Hoyoke there that day. So just want to invite everyone, if they're available, to come and join us that day. And all the information's on their website, which is SpringfieldPuertoRicanParade.com. So hopefully, some of you can join us that day, and we can have some Hoyoke representation that day.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that great announcement. Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, I'll also make a note too, but prior to saying that, Josie, please, for whatever you guys do next year, you guys do next year, please entertain putting my name down too. Myself and Sheila Moore tried talking to Diastato, trying to help us out with marketing, but he just said it was too far gone. But we're more than welcome to volunteer at the parade committee on the marketing side services. We'd love to do that. Also, on everyone's desk tonight, there's a note from my wife, from Comcast. They're presenting the homework house with a very large check Thursday, September 17. It's early, it's 3:30, but I think it would be very beneficial if all you guys came to represent the City Council. It's a very large check and they're very, in fact, the head Comcast person's going to be there. I think you'd find it very interesting. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for that announcement, Counsel Leahy. Counsel Bartley, can you just remind us again of Holyoke Day at the Big E, the date?
22nd of September?
I'm sorry. Oh, yes. How can we forget?
22nd?
9/22, yes. Okay, very good. Counsel McGivern?
In the spirit of announcements, the Holyoke Mary Ground's holding their two-year fundraiser at the Mary Ground this year, not at the Log Cabin. The theme this year is Fall Back in Time, which includes food from the, all the ethnic groups of the city, especially the ones that participated in the creation, or I guess the building of the city of Holyoke, and of course, the favorite look-back at Mountain Park with Mountain Park memorabilia. It's at the Mary Ground. The Pioneer Valley Railroad's going to participate with, as part of the ticket for the fundraiser, with train rides back and forth to the mall. It's going to be a wonderful evening with music from Tommy Tisto, with music that goes back to the 40s, 50s, 60s, and so on. All these, this is just, these are announcements. I think everybody got invitations in the mail, but tickets are going quick. Hope to see you all there.
And there's also a raffle, correct? That's going to be there.
Yeah, there's a grand prize raffle. Limited amount of tickets. There are $100 raffle ticket. These are the, for the preservation fund of the Mary Ground itself, which is very expensive, and the prizes are listed on the announcement. There's limited, I think it's no more than 300 tickets, probably going to be about 200 tickets sold, and the odds are going to be good, Counsel Leahy.
Very good.
Is that a dig? I don't get it.
I get it. I got a ticket with your name on it.
Oh. Anybody want to split it?
Right. A lot of people are splitting them.
I purchased one, so.
Peer pressure.
I'll be happy to promote. So, without further ado, we move now off to the Ordinance Committee reports. The Committee on Ordinance, to whom was referred that the council consider allowing parking as a principal use by special permit in each zone presently in use in the downtown area, and craft permit criteria to properly regulate such use. Note, order refiled in order to hold a public hearing in accordance with the deadlines set forth under Massachusetts General Law 40A Section 5. Have considered the same. Recommend that the order be adopted as amended. Counselors Leacy, Alexander, Vakin, Bartley, and Shattonoff?
Motion to pass the first reading.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to pass the first reading. Under discussion, Counsel Leacy.
Thank you. So, this is a special permit to allow parking as a principal use in three zones in the city. The three zones include downtown residential, general industrial, and commercial business. And the reason why we started pursuing this path is because this body has been presented with a number of businesses that have been trying to expand parking in various areas, but especially in the downtown area. And they can only do that with a zone change to the most liberal and, to the most liberal zone, which is Business Highway. And the zone change is a more permanent zoning solution to something that seems to be in need of a particular business. And so we wanted to go a special permit route. We had five or six public hearings on this issue, and we were really fortuitous in terms of the timing, because the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, at the same time, was creating a downtown Holyoke parking plan, providing technical assistance and some guidance for how to leverage new development in the center city, now that we have our downtown redevelopment plan adopted. So, if I could just highlight some of the particulars of the special permit that we crafted. Again, it's limited to three zones, downtown residential, general industrial, and commercial business. The applicant has to provide documentation that they cannot otherwise provide parking on the principal parcel. Documentation just means that you need to give a narrative, and that narrative can include drawings, plans, diagrams, et cetera. It's not, proof is not a requirement, just documentation of some sort. The special permit will be non-transferable, so that way, only the applicant can use the parking on the parcel with the special permit for as long as the applicant is in business. It doesn't go along with the property the same way a zone change would go along with the property. There are a number of plans that need to be submitted alongside of the application, including a locust plan, a utility plan, landscape plan, improvement plans, erosion control plan, and a storm management plan. And one of the public hearings, Kathy Veans of the Holyoke YMCA came in and said that all the plans that would be requested here are things that they were going to be preparing anyhow. So it's not an inordinate threshold of any sort. Because a number of plans are submitted, and they're required to be reviewed by various offices, departments in the city, we are requiring a $500 application fee. It's a one-time fee. However, the special permit will be reviewed and renewed biannually. There's no cost to this biannual review, but we want to make sure that the parcel is being kept up neatly and that we're not having problems with, for example, storm water management or trash or other things like that. So, again, there's no fee to this biannual renewal. It really serves as a way to review the condition that the parking by special permit lot is being kept in. I think that is a good summary. The one thing that I would like to do is actually offer an amendment. If I can make that motion now, Mr. President?
Yep.
I'm looking for it, I'm sorry. So, we, in the ordinance committee, created language that was a little bit too vague, and so we want to add, I'm just looking for where it is. I'm sorry, I lost it. We wanted to create a setback of 25 feet. There it is. Number eight, if you go to Section 6176, General Design Standards, we created a Condition 8 that says parking lot shall not be within 25 feet of another parking area, and parking area is too nebulous and vague a term. What we wanted to prevent with that language is multiple special permit lots being tacked onto one another to create one vast field of parking. And so, the parking area is too general, and actually, you could create problems with parking next to alleyways or streets even. So, we want to say 25 feet of another permitted parking area.
Okay, so amendment to add the word permitted before the word parking?
That's right, correct.
Okay. Is there a second to that amendment? Okay, seconded. Any discussion? Hearing done. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Word permitted is now in the final draft that you will be considering, and that'll be between the word "another" and the word "parking" at item eight in 6.1.7.6. Anything else, Madam Chair?
I think that's all for my summary, and if there's questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Great. Thank you, Counsel Bartley.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to amend this, Mr. President, if I could?
Okay.
Under 6.173, Paragraph 6, I'd like to motion, make a motion to strike that whole paragraph.
Just so for the benefit of counselors that'll be considering this, this item, item number 6.1.73, criteria reads, "The accessory panel must be adjacent to or directly across the street..."
Where are you, Mr. President?
6.1.73?
Six, yeah.
Six or three?
Six, six.
Six, excuse me.
No, no, you have it right. 6173, item six.
Oh, right. Oh, okay. Item six.
Just item six.
I thought I heard item three. Okay. 6.1.73, criteria, item number six. "As a condition of the special permit, the streetscape along the accessory panel shall be improved with the inclusion of features such as trees, a green belt, improved sidewalk, or other similar features that will improve the streetscape and promote pedestrian access between the principal and accessory parcel." And Counsel Bartley has made amendment to delete item number six. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second. Under discussion, Counsel Bartley?
Thank you. Just, I appreciate, just under discussion. I was originally going to turn this, well, first of all, I'm going to make several amendments tonight, probably eight or nine to this, to this, to this ordinance, okay? The reason I'm doing this, I was unable to attend the August 11 hearing because I was, I took my one vacation for the summer. So normally, you know, we just do as an ordinance, but I wasn't there. So, that's, I apologize in advance. This one, if you'll see it, this is a parking lot, and what the ordinance is saying here is that as a condition for your parking lot, you've got to put in this whole streetscape with trees, a green belt, you've got to improve the sidewalk, you've got to improve this, it's just, it's just incredibly burdensome. I was going to motion to make that be a "may," but let me just point out something, if I may. If you look at 6175, the letter G, and it says, it says right there, "Explain how the proposed parking lot will be integrated into the existing neighborhood through design features such as vegetative buffers and the retention of open space." That pretty much covers it right there. If you leave it as it is, you're going to force anybody who wants a parking lot to put in thousands of dollars above and beyond what they're doing. So, I'll leave it at that.
Any other discussion? Counsel Leacy?
I just want to point out that this special permit criteria is for downtown residential, industrial zones, business, commercial, business, commercial. They're all areas that have a high residential quality alongside a business component. So, item number six says that the streetscape should have these plantings and improvements. And in item number four, under General Design Standards, it talks about the buffering of activities to adjacent parcels. So, one is looking outward towards the street, and the other is looking towards neighboring lots.
Okay. Any other discussion? Counsel McGee?
If the council has eight or nine different recommendations, why don't we just send it back to committee to vet those?
Second.
Because otherwise, we're going to be here all night.
That's one option.
I don't know if there's a time rush. I, I'm just saying...
That's just a question. I think Counsel Leacy would like to weigh in on that.
I would like to weigh on it, and I respect the fact that Counsel Bartley did take a well-deserved vacation over the summer, was not able to make the meeting. However, at the public hearing previously, he had made more than eight or nine amendments, and they were documented by the clerk of the planning board. And so we had a document that said, here's what the planning board is passing, passing. Here are the, you know, numerous amendments that were suggested by Counsel Bartley. They were actually itemized and detailed for us, and we went through them in committee as an itemized list. So, we really did give, you know, due time and consideration to the amendments that were proposed by Counsel Bartley, and perhaps he, you know, wasn't able to argue for them at that meeting. But there were four other counselors there at the meeting who considered, and actively considered and argued multiple points, because they were very good points, and we did adopt some of those points, and they are, they are in the document before you.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Is someone making the motion to send it back to committee? Okay, motion's been made and seconded to refer it back to committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No's half, unless we want to have a show of hands. No's half. Want to show hands? Okay. Raise your hand if you want to send it back to committee. Five. Motion fails. Counsel Bartley?
I know I said eight or nine, but there's about three that have any import. The other ones are just maybe a word or two, because they look like there were typos or there's missing words. So, I mean, I, maybe I built it up too much when I said eight or nine. So, I think if we can...
Well, it's on the floor now, and currently, we're now at discussion of your amendment to item number six, under 6.1.73, regarding the
Oh, good.
Trees, green belt, improved sidewalks, or other similar features that will improve streetscape. Counsel Alexander?
Yeah, one of the concerns that we addressed in committee, and it came both from people who live in the downtown area generally, and also from the PVPC documentation and other documentation that we've had a chance to look at, is that when you create parking, you essentially create holes in the, in the built environment. And those can be sort of daunting to walk across, and they chop up the built environment. And this particular paragraph was an attempt to kind of tie everything back together, keep the streets walkable, and prevent while allowing the parking, which was, seems to be a necessary use, because we have a parking deficit downtown in some areas, but without it causing a damaging side effect to the fabric of downtown. So, this was really a specific attempt to prevent a negative while allowing, for the positive of allowing parking. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Counsel McGivern?
I understand and see Counsel Bartley's point. I think the language is, is very tough, but I think the intent is correct that, you know, and I would hope that this item is negotiable when the special permit is being debated before, before the appointing authority. The, you know, the idea of having landscape and correct, you know, blending in of a parking area with whatever area it's in, is something that we always have to be cognizant of and always be promoting. But I just hope that this is not a make or break in terms of the way the language reads in item number six, more that it's negotiable.
Well, to your point, I think we should consider the language again and what that means. It says, "The streetscape along the accessory parcel shall," so we have the word "shall," that's a pretty strict word, "but be improved, be improved." That's pretty, that's beauties in the eye of the beholder, right? So, we got the word "be improved." That's a, that's a bit of a nebulous word. "With the inclusion of features such as trees, green belt, improved sidewalk, or other similar features..."
And, Mr. President, I would also point out the "such as." It's a recited list of potential improvements, not a mandated list of required improvements.
That will improve the streetscape, you know? So, there is some vagueness in there if that makes people more comfortable, you know, in terms of the "shall," that's a pretty hard word, but the other components are somewhat more
Forgiving.
Level of flexibility there.
I don't have that.
So... I mean, I can amend my motion to change, if we just change the "shall" to "may."
Second.
Okay. How about that?
Okay, so withdrawing Amendment 1, which is the deletion of the whole section.
Yeah, I'll just change, change the "shall" to "may."
Okay. So, motion on the floor is withdrawing the original amendment. Motion has been made and seconded by a few different people to change the word "shall" to "may." Counsel Alexander would like to weigh in on that.
Thank you. The point of this, again, is to put some level of requirements, such as tree belts, such as landscaping, such as sidewalk improvements. If you change it to "may," there is nothing, there's no requirement at all. So, the developer can simply say, "I don't feel like it. We're not going to do anything at all. We're going to leave the same miserable sidewalk that's broken down with no green space at all." The point of "shall" is to require them to do something, and the point of "such as" is to give them options and to be flexible about what the something is. So, I would argue against that amendment as well. Thank you.
Counsel Brosnahan?
I think that is, Counsel Bartley pointed out that, you know, 6.1.75 talks about that in number, in letter G. I mean, I don't know, I don't know any parking lot. I mean, we have the new development right at the old Holyoke Catholic. There's a huge parking lot right there. I don't know if they're going to fix the sidewalks. I don't know if they're required to fix the sidewalks. Mind you, as property owners, you have to maintain the ice and snow that. But let's just say, the tree they plant in uproots and starts beveling the sidewalk. So, are they required now to fix the sidewalk that's technically public property? Although, again, they're required to maintain ice and snow and those types of features. But, you know, I don't know that the guy that lives on the corner of Madison and North Hampton Street is required to fix his sidewalk if it buckles or it, you know, and they want to improve the sidewalk, you know, and I think that if we make it to "shall," we're creating a law that's going to be on the books forever. We don't know what the planning board is going to be like in 10 years. We don't know what the planning board is going to be like in 10 years or in 15 years, or what the city of Hoyokathic is going to be like. I think that, you know, it's covered in Level G, there's enough discretion in this four-page document for another special permit that we're going to be issuing to, to, to property owners in the city of Hoyokathic, you know? Due diligence on the ordinance committee, I know you guys, I know you guys hashed this out thoroughly. I just, I just think that, I mean, I think that Dave, Counselor Bartley, had a good point, and I think it's covered in another section, and it's, it's a little bit, a little, letter G is a little bit open, a little bit freer, where it doesn't say "shall," because as any attorney would tell you, "shall" means you have to. And it does say "such as," but it has, you have two choices, so "trees, green belt, improved sidewalk, or similar features." I mean, is that bushes? Is that, you know, painting the sidewalk? I mean, what is that? I mean, and I don't know who's going to be in charge of the planning board to make those decisions, because it's a very powerful sentence right there. Thank you.
Counselor Lisi.
Hi, I think that really...
Mr. President, just point of order, I mean, she's spoken, I think, three times already.
They're on different items, I'm sorry.
It's on the same item, Counselor.
Member raises a point of order that...
I mean, at some point...
The counselor has spoken more than twice, actually, the rule is...
Permission to suspend, it's the committee chair trying to respond to a point that was made.
Okay, member's spoken more than twice, request permission, she's requested permission to speak before the body for a third time.
Fourth time.
All in favor of allowing the counselor to speak?
No.
Opposed?
No.
Eyes carry.
Wait, it would...
I heard, I heard more ayes than opposed, but I'll say it again. All in favor of allowing the counselor to speak?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Eyes have it, Counselor Lisi, your floor is yours.
I'd actually like a suspension of the rules and ask the keeper of the minutes to report back how many times they have spoke on this amendment.
Oh, are you keeping...
That's useful time.
I don't think we're tracking every single time.
Well, if I need to be a typical route of shutting me down, in particular, in this body, that I've spoken so many times, I'm the chair of the ordinance committee, I have a report to begin with, and then we make amendments along the way, and so we have other things to say, I am the point person on every question that comes up. I mean, really, if I'm not allowed to speak
Well...
Multiple times, I do not get to three times on this one particular item, I find it to be a way to shut me down and my voice down in this chamber.
Okay. Well, let me, let me address that from a rules perspective. The rule is what the rule is, you know it, you've been here for eight years. However, notwithstanding that being the rule, you and I both know that we, I recognize absolutely that everything you just said is 100% true, other than the part about intentionally trying to shut you down. I can't speak to read people's minds, but I think I, and I think the overwhelming majority, always vote to allow you to speak and, I don't know, infinite number of times, so that you can say whatever you need to say, because you're absolutely right. Different points are being raised, and so you want to address those different points if you have a certain amount of information. However, I think the spirit of it is that we keep the discussion flowing, we don't need to do point, counterpoint, just if it's additional information that somebody on something, but if it's weighing in on your opinion, then just weigh in on, you know, one or two times on your opinion. Okay, so if we can move forward, Counselor, did you want to address, because the council, the council did vote to give you leave to speak again.
I just want to reiterate the point that item six and the section on criteria and item, I'm sorry, four on general design standards are not redundant. They address different parts, the outward-facing part and the inward-facing parts of the parcel. Additionally, to the point that we just hashed out, while "shall" is a strong word, there is, I mean, you could read the sentence as, "The parcel shall be improved," because really, everything else is just an example, and then it ends with an "or." So you could do any of these things, it's not forcing you to do anything other than make some sort of improvement, which would be hashed out in the public hearing process.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on the amendment?
I have a quick question. Oh, I'm sorry, not on the amendment, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Any other discussion? Reminding counselors that the amendment is to change the word "shall" to "may," that is the proposal from Counselor Bartley at all. Anybody else? Hearing none, vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment to change the word from "shall" to "may?"
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Show of hands, please. Raise your hand if you're in favor of adopting the amendment. Five. I saw six, but close enough.
Motion to strike item number six.
Okay. Motion is made and seconded to strike item number six. Any further discussion needed? Counselor McGivern.
The cost of a parking lot is extremely expensive due to stormwater management. I think each of us know that. Incredibly expensive. This language is much too strong. You know, if we can't just change one simple word to be flexible, then let's get rid of the language because it's wrong. Counselor Brosnahan said it, Counselor Bartley said it, we're asking too much of a developer of an entity to put in sidewalks? The city has to control sidewalks, not, not the person that owns the property. Or else where there's concrete sidewalks, we're going to have asphalt sidewalks. We're going to have things that are going to look like a hodgepodge, there's going to be no control. The property owners take care of a tree belt, the city owns the tree belt. I agree it should look good, I agree it should be part of the neighborhood, but come on, stormwater management is so expensive, people cannot even maintain their parking lots now. If we're going to add cost to things, we're not going to be able to develop the downtown the way we want to see it developed.
Counselor Alexander.
Thanks, I'll offer an amendment to strike the word sidewalks, since that seems to be the main point of contention.
Okay.
Second.
So motion's been made and seconded to strike the word "improved sidewalk." It's not plural in here, so we'll keep it as, exactly as it reads, deleting the word "improved sidewalk." Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. The word "improved sidewalk," deleted. Motion on the floor now is Counselor McGivern's motion, which is to delete the entirety, and that was seconded, of section six. Any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Show of hands, all in favor, if you're in favor of Counselor McGivern's amendment, please raise your hand. Seven, motion fails. Seven to seven. Any other amendments?
I do.
Okay.
This one should be easier.
Moving on.
6176, number two, in between the word "barrier" and "must," I thought we should put the word "that" or "which," just for clarification, I could.
So in seven...
I'm sorry.
6.1.7...
6176.
Item two?
Two, yes, sir.
And you're looking to, just give that to me again, please?
It says, "Perimeter, curb, or barrier must be provide," the entire parking area must be paved and striped and have a perimeter, curb, or barrier that must be provided to prevent, I thought that would should be, just include between the word "barrier" and "must."
Okay, so grammatical change.
Just to clear it, grammatical change.
Thank you.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded to add the word "that" between the word "barrier" and "must." Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. That has been added to that section.
Just a motion, Mr. President, under that same 6176, to, I'm trying to try it again, within the right of way...
Item number what, sir?
Five, sir.
Five.
Change the "shall" to a "may."
Okay. Currently, this section reads, "Within the right of way," this is under general design standards, item number five, "within the right of way," in parentheses, "tree belt, and within the frontages, trees shall be installed with the spacing, caliber, and species as approved by the city forester." And your amendment is to change the word from "shall" to "may."
Yeah, trees may be installed, yeah.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Under discussion, Counselor Vacan.
Thank you. I'd like to make a point of clarification.
Yes.
Per my notes out of the committee meeting, I believe we had amended that language to say, "Within the right of way, when trees are proposed, trees shall be installed as approved to the spacing and approval of the city forester."
You think that's right?
I concur with that recollection, yeah.
Okay.
That's not what I have in front of me.
That is not what we have in front of us, just so we're clear. So give me that language again, because what you're saying is the committee had already adopted this. Okay.
Within the right of way, when trees are proposed...
Did you leave the word "tree belt" in there?
No.
Okay, so deleting the word "tree belt," and you put "when"?
When trees are proposed...
When trees are proposed.
Trees shall be installed.
Trees shall be installed.
Species, spacing, and...
And caliber.
Caliber.
Species, what was the second word?
Species, spacing, and caliber as approved by the city forester.
Just point of clarification, that's caliber with a P, as in Peter, not caliber with a B as in bullets.
Thank you.
What does that mean?
The width of the trunk. The diameter of the trunk.
It's good to know what the laws we're passing mean. I'm not a tree guy.
Standard tree warden speak for size of tree, I don't know why they use caliber, but they do.
So how about size? So the reader of the laws can understand.
We'll be ready for scrabble after this session.
Let's go to match which?
Yes, yes.
City councils match wits.
Um, so therefore, let me be clear, that item number five should be currently reading, "When trees are proposed," excuse me, "Within the right of way, when trees are proposed, trees shall be installed, species, spacing, and caliper as approved by the city forester."
Did you want to offer that in the form of an amendment, since the language in front of us isn't right?
That is what...
Why don't you, just to be safe, why don't you add that as an amendment?
Okay, so I would propose that amendment to the language that's currently before us.
Second.
So motion's been made and seconded to add that amendment as offered by Counselor Vacan, which may or may not have, most likely already has, been approved by the committee. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved, so that's the new language for item number five. So Counselor Bartley...
I'm going to withdraw my amendment, Kevin.
Counselor Bartley withdraws his amendment.
I'm going to make a motion for another amendment, please?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Under that same section, I want to strike paragraph 10.
Which currently reads, "In no case shall parking, shall the parking lot use occupy more than one-third of the adjacent or nearby parcels."
Second.
And the motion on the floor is to delete item number 10. Under discussion, Counselor Bartley.
I just think this is, you know, government run amok. I mean, so first of all, you got to have, you got to have your, your main lot, you know, the locus. Additionally, to get this permit, you have to have an adjacent lot. And now we're saying, on this adjacent lot, no more than one-third, in no case shall the parking lot use occupy more than one-third of the parcel. I mean, it's just government run amok. So strike the whole thing, I mean, because there's no rational basis for it.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So moved, item number 10, deleted.
May I make another amendment, Mr. President?
Yes, sir, Counselor.
Okay.
We have no rule on numbers of amendments. Just so you know.
Well, I don't want to...
But that may be...
Thank you, Brez, I appreciate it. On that same section, you have to go to the next page, number 11, again, I just want to change the word "shall" to "may."
So let me read that, just for the benefit of everybody. Item number 11, "An ADA connection between the parking lot and the primary parcel use shall be incorporated into the plan, and its installation shall be paid for at the expense of the applicant." And you're seeking to change both "shals" or just the first "shall?"
The first "shall."
The first "shall," so therefore, it would read, "An ADA connection between parking lot and the primary parcel use may be incorporated into the plan, and its installation shall be paid for at the expense of the applicant."
Just under discussion.
Under discussion, oh, is there a second?
Second, we did, we had a second.
Counselor Bartley.
So again, we want to make sure we're ADA compliant all the time, okay? But there may be an instance where you don't have to have a crosswalk, or you don't have to have any, you just want, I want some flexibility. So if the planning board says, well, you know, we need to have an ADA-compliant crosswalk, you know, they have that option, you know, they, they can do it, they can impose that. And if so, it shall be paid for by the applicant. The way this reads, just do it, it says "shall," just put it in. That's my only thinking, thank you.
Mr. President?
Counselor Alexander.
I think the intent here is to make sure that the city isn't on the hook for an improvement because an applicant wants an accessory parking lot, and all of a sudden, now the city has to put in the ADA compliance to get people over to the main use. I guess I'd offer an amendment to that paragraph to start it with, "If required for accessibility, then it shall be installed." Because I don't think we want the city to get into having to do it for them because it only said "may," and so the applicant just didn't do it, but now there's an ADA compliance issue.
I'll withdraw my motion, second, Gordons.
Yeah, and to your point...
It's fine.
Nothing this city council can do can transcend any state or federal law anyways. We can't exceed our authority. Therefore, if there is an ADA requirement, that stands, notwithstanding anything that we would say to waive that right. Therefore, to your point, if it's required, then you shall put it in. Right? So at the beginning of the sentence, therefore, your amendment, if I understand it correctly, is, "If an ADA connection," no, if...
I would just say, "if required for accessibility."
If required for accessibility.
When?
When required for accessibility?
It doesn't matter. I'm not going to bring it up. If it's required, you do it.
Motion to suspend, let the law department decide which word is better.
Carrie, you have a preference for "if" or "when?" Seems to say the same thing, right? Yeah.
I like "if" because it's conditional.
What's that?
I like "if" because it's conditional, that's why I prefer it.
So at the moment, the amendment stands as, "If required for accessibility," comma, "an ADA connection," all the other language will stay the same.
Correct.
That was seconded, under discussion, Counselor Leahy.
Under discussion, you know, I know that we're all hearing this, I'm sure that we're all hearing that, the fact that city council's not getting a lot done. You know, going door to door, people are saying to me that, you know, it just seems like everything is getting held up. And this, I think, is one of the biggest reasons why. This discussion is a very important one, and we should be going over this, but this is the work that has to be done, or should be done, in committee. This is very important work, the language, obviously, as Counselor Brosnahan said, is very important for the next 100 years, but this is the work that should be done in committee. Now, we just spent 25 minutes on this, and we're not even halfway through this one particular item. I make a motion that this goes back to committee.
Second? We have already, just from a rules perspective, we have already voted once on a motion to send this back to committee. Therefore, I'm going to consider your motion a reconsideration of our prior vote, because that's really what it is, since we're still on the same item. So Counselor Leahy is asking for us to reconsider our prior action, which was to not send it to committee. Is there a second to that? Motion fails for lack of a second, or do you, you seconded, okay, seconded. All right, so now we're on a reconsideration of our prior vote to send this back to committee. Counselor McGivern?
Just to help us make a decision, how many more amendments might there be out here?
Two, two more.
Actually, one more, I'm sorry.
One more.
Strike that.
Do it, do it. Okay. Counselor Vagan?
I would just like to point out that there's very little attendance at committee meetings by the majority of the body. And when we have complex ordinances like this, quite frankly, I think some of the issues that have been brought up tonight are useful. We didn't specifically address these in committee. That's why we bring these things to the full body. So I don't really have a problem with some discussion taking place because the one thing we're not supposed to be is a rubber stamp. We're supposed to actually read the things and make sure that the things we're passing make sense for the public. And, you know, that when they read them, it makes sense to them. So if we have to spend some time on it and it addresses a complex matter, so be it. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Tom?
I agree. Jim, I see your frustration sometimes in what this, you know, we're supposed to do and some things don't get done.
Don't address me, address him.
Well, you know, things do don't get done sometimes and, but this is important. Not everybody, as Counsel Vagan said, can get to committee meetings and it's, uh, stuff going through this page by page or paragraph by paragraph that are important. So if it takes a little bit of time to get it done and get it done right, uh, we have a couple more amendments, maybe one more, um, two more, get it done.
Sorry, Joe.
All right.
Sorry, I got, I, yeah, I miscounted, sorry.
All in favor of reconsidering our prior vote to...
I withdraw it.
Motion's withdrawn. Okay. Therefore, we have currently on the floor Counselor Alexander's amendment, which is to add at the beginning of section 11, "If required for accessibility," comma, that's been seconded, Counsel McGivern, under discussion.
I have no problem with the amendment or anything, as long as I think the intent of the, uh, the Disability Act is very clear and we have to follow it. If it's a city street that's separating the, the parcel from, from the new proposed parking lot, the access is the intersection unless the city approves a midway pedestrian crossway. If we approve a midway pedestrian crossway, we have to make it accessible for, for disabled people. So I think it's, in some cases, it's a moot point, but a very important point in terms of lots that may not be, may be on the same side of the street.
Okay, anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Counsel Bartley?
Uh, I'd like to make an amendment, Mr. President, to, um, this is one or two more and I do apologize. I apologize at the start of this. So I thought I explained myself, but not, I guess, not clearly enough. Uh, 6178, part F, uh, it says the fee is $500. I'd like to make an amendment to that if I could, Mr. President.
Yes.
I'd like to, um, just change, clarify the language. The required fee is $500 for a for-profit company. The required fee is $100 for a nonprofit corporation.
And what if you're neither a profit corporation or a nonprofit corporation? What if you're a sole proprietor?
Well, the sole proprietor...
Or a partnership?
Are they profit or for-profit? They gotta be one or the other.
No.
No.
Sole proprietor?
Well, what do you think?
Yeah, it has to be profit.
Sole proprietor, I guess, is theoretically also profit, right? A profit of myself?
Then how about this?
Yeah, I'm Mr. Jones and I own an apartment block.
No, no, I, I hear what you're saying, but I mean, you're either in business for-profit or you're not profit. But I'll, I'll strike that. I'll amend it, uh, $100 fee. That's, that's my amendment.
Okay, so amend $500 to $100.
Second. Second.
So let me just read this currently, so just everybody's clear. 6.1.78, application. Item number F reads, "Required fee of $500, check made payable to the city of Hoyok. The counselor offers an amendment to amend from 500 to 100. That was seconded. Under discussion, Counsel Bartley weighed in.
I appreciate that. I'll just, I meant to say, and I know what you mean, Kevin, it's, uh, there's a sole proprietor partnership, I'll say, I get that. And the language wasn't clear enough, so I appreciate that. Um, the point being here, it's a very expensive proposition to even put in a parking lot, never mind all the, which I respected, all of us, because hell, the vote went down, all the streetscape improvements. Um, I'm thinking, and we all know where this, this came from, it came from a zoning denial from the Y. It just seemed to me that $500 for the YMCA is tough, so I'd just rather make it, you know, at least a more manageable fee for any applicant. Thank you.
Okay, Counsel Lisi?
Um, I just want to state very explicitly, while this does apply to the Y and while Kathy Vanes came down to testify in favor of the proposal before us, um, I, I do want to state that it is much more broadly applicable. And there have actually been several applicants coming before us seeking, um, parking by special permit, including Mountain Park. Um, and Eric Sore wanted to put parking on, a parking lot on, on the, the parcel across from the highway. And he wasn't allowed to do that because the, the neighbors lost that or fought against the zone change there. So this, this would be a similar type of situation. Additionally, as I stated earlier, um, a lot of these recommendations come from, um, the downtown Hoyok parking plan that was, um, giving strategies for how to leverage, um, business development downtown. Um, and so we could see that, um, many apartment buildings, as they develop, would be able to make use of this, um, as well. Um, $500 fees is set, um, because there are a number of bodies that are requested to weigh in, a number of city departments that are west, are requested to weigh in on the process. It's taking our municipal employees time. And it's not, you know, it's not like the city's trying to make a profit with this $500, but really compensate, um, the city for the time that it's expending on the review process. Thank you.
Counsel Vagan?
Thank you. Um, I seconded this motion because I'm not a big fan of fees anyway, and I'm definitely not a big fan of high fees. We already have the highest business tax rate, one of two, I think, in the state. We keep talking about how we want to be business friendly, resident friendly. Well, this is a way to help people live downtown, have their businesses downtown, and I think the fees should be reasonable. And to me, $100 is reasonable. I think $500 is not. Thank you.
Counsel Brezner?
Thank you. Uh, just to piggyback Counsel Vagan's view, uh, I agree, and I had this conversation with the Board of Health. I mean, you know, these, these departments are not in, in the business of, of generating revenue for the city of Hoyok. Whether or not 500 people come in to get a $500 permit for a parking lot or nobody comes in, they're all getting paid the same amount of money to do their job. Raising, the Board of Health permit fees have gone up throughout all the boards in the city of Hoyok. $100 is reasonable. Again, you know, boards of health and building departments, planning boards, they're not in the business of generating revenue. It's going into the general fund where the mayor can do with it what he wishes. If it was a recycling or, uh, going back into an apartment, I could maybe see a higher fee, but it's not. It's not a revolving fund. It's just going into the general coffers. The mayor can do with the money what's, with our approval, of course. So I, I, I think that $100 is, is very reasonable and, uh, I hope that we get it through. Thanks.
Counsel Bartley?
Just to point out, since the chair brought her name up, Kathy was here, um, for one of the meetings, uh, regarding the special permit. Uh, and while overall, I, I think she was okay with this ordinance, she specifically, specifically pointed out, "The $500 fee is onerous." Kathy Vanes did not support the $500 fee. Thank you.
Counsel Soto?
Thank you too. I want to go on record too. I think that $500 is excessive and, um, I think $100 would be more appropriate. Thank you.
Counsel Lisi?
Um, Kathy Vanes spoke against a $500 renewal fee, a biannual renewal fee, that was originally in the document that was, um, given to us to review by the planning board. And so we struck the renewal fee and made it a free renewal plan, um, and, and review process. And it was a one-time $500 application fee, again, because multiple city departments have to take their time to review this process.
The other, Counsel Alexander?
Uh, just, I think in general, it's probably not a great idea to go down a road of the fee depends on who's asking for the service.
Agreed.
So I'm not sure we want to start separating this particular one into nonprofit and for-profit and what if you're...
No, that's off the floor.
It is.
No, this is strictly everybody 500 or everybody 100. That's what's on the floor right now. The nonprofit, for-profit, yep, that's gone. Um, any other discussion? All right. Uh, motion, so we're all crystal clear here. The amendment on the floor offered by Counsel Bartley is to amend the, the number 500, reduce it to 100. Therefore, the application fee would be $100 if the amendment passes. Uh, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Eyes have it? All do a show of hands if there's a doubt. Motion carries? $100.
Sounds like jeopardy.
I'll take zoning for 100, Alex.
Uh, final, final, final. Um, and I thought this would be the controversial one, so saved it for last. Um, I'd like to, um, add a, add an appeal section if I could.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. President, so I'd like to add a, a section 12 to this thing.
There, there is an appeal section, by the way, in Enforcement, Laps and Appeal, 6171.
Appeal persons aggrieved by the action of the planning board pursuant to section 6.1.71 shall appeal in accordance with the provisions of chapter 48, section 17.
Yeah, under, under 48, section 17, it, it doesn't allow for any city council, uh, review. Uh, and so my, my amendment's different from that appeal. So may I just state my amendment, Mr. President?
By all means, yes, Counsel Bartley.
Uh, and so it would just be any applicant whose special permit is denied by the planning board may appeal to the city council within 90 days of denial and the city council vote shall be final.
Second.
Okay. And you want to, we're going to call this, uh, so actually, we're going to delete, therefore, 6.1.711, section 1. And we're going to say that persons aggrieved by the action of the planning board may appeal to the city council, uh, within 90 days and that appeal shall be final.
Yeah, city council vote shall be final.
City council vote shall be final.
Yep.
Mr. President, I'm being advised by our legal representation that that actually isn't legal. We can't do that.
Mr. President?
If you want to suspend and have legal approach.
Okay.
Quaint of order, legal can't be advising one counselor off the floor. Thank you.
No, which is why I'm suggesting it be brought to the council.
It should be a suspension of rules.
Motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend the rules to allow the law department to address the city council, uh, regarding Counsel Bartley's amendment. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? All move? Kara?
As a special permit, this is governed by the state law, which is 48, section 17. So you can't change, that provides for an appeal to Superior Court. Um, I would not be legal to substitute, uh, a local appeal to the city council.
Let me ask you this. Could you put it as an intermediary step, but the final appeal be the Superior Court?
No.
No.
No, because you have to, the statute sets forth the timelines. There's one, we went, kind of addressed this in the committee. There's one special permit granting authority, in this case, the planning board. And so it has to follow the statutory requirements.
So you've heard the law department weigh in on that. Any other questions, Counselor Vagan?
I don't have a question.
Okay, no? Counsel Bartley, do you want to...
And the amendment I would like to offer.
Do you want to weigh in on, on what you just heard?
Well, she's just wanted suspension, so I can, I can ask a question?
By all means, yeah.
Okay.
Kara?
So instead of having the, the planning board, uh, hear the special permit, we can have the city council hear the special permit, true?
Yes. There can only be one...
There can only be one.
...special permit granting authority.
Okay, then, then, then my amendment is going to be to have the city council be the special permit granting authority.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to have the city council be the special granting authority. And now that's going to be throughout the entire package.
Throughout the document, yes.
Okay, so where we hear planning board, we delete planning board and substitute it by city council.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and that has been seconded, under discussion, Counsel Vagan?
Thank you. Um, I would point out that in committee, I was in opposition of putting this authority with the planning board. We had the discussion that we've had in this body numerous times now as to which body's political and which isn't. We're all political. If we're elected, we're political. If the mayor appoints us, we're political. My point is, we are directly responsible back to the voters. There's no second tier, so no point of removal. So if special permits are coming before a body to be decided in the city, I'm a strong proponent that they come before the city council who answers directly to the people. Thank you.
Any other, uh, Counsel Lisi?
Thank you. Um, at the previous city council meeting, I think we had a, a long discussion about, um, the number of special permits that the city council deals with and how, um, they require a level of technical expertise that we as a city council do not have. And those were one of the main reasons why in committee we decided to keep the authority, um, within the planning board. Um, because this is a highly technical matter and it involves stormwater, um, management plans. Um, and, you know, there, a lot of the measures in here are similar to site plan review. And that's the purview of the planning board. And I think that they do have, um, much more experience and expertise. Whether or not they're political, um, it's the expertise that they have in that body. And then they have a more direct, um, connection to the planning department and, and the staff within that department to make, um, technical and, and informed decisions. Thank you.
Any other, Counsel Vagan?
Thank you. And I would point out that as a member of ordinance committee, we deal with highly complex, highly technical matters every other week. We bring in the people that we need to inform us so that we can make an informed decision. I see a special permit process being no different from that. And I think to hide behind something being too technical or too complex, um, is just phony. Thanks.
Counsel McGivern?
Just to point out that the special permits now going to the DGR committee is putting a demand on our, our both, our law department and our planning staff to be present in this, the city council chambers on evenings, whereas taking away, I think, from their normal workday. Um, the planning board is a plan, meeting with the planning staff and other technical staff provided for the planning department, from the planning department itself, along with the law department. And I think we have to be mindful of our, our paid salary employees and their schedules so as not to take them away from their, uh, day-to-day duties more than we have to.
Any other opinions on this? Hearing none. Uh, the amendment on the floor is to strike references to planning board and make the city council the deciding, uh, body on, uh, these special permits. Um, we clear on what, uh, we're voting on? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Uh, sounds like the no's, Carrie, but I can ask for a show of hands if there's doubt on that.
Show of hands.
Show of hands, all in, uh, if you're a yes vote on making it city council authority, raise your hand. If you're a no vote, don't raise your hand. Five votes, so we will be staying the as-is for the moment. Uh, the motion fails.
I have a general question.
Yes, Counsel President.
To the chair, if I could, uh, I, I, this is, well, very thorough document. I'm just kind of curious, any, any members here? Was this kind of, was this based on other communities' special permit with respect to a parking lot, zone change? Was this, you know, obviously, there's a lot of, you know, just, you get a, you get a new law, you gotta put 6.1.7.1, blah, blah, explaining it, you gotta have the dictionary, all that sort of stuff. But I'm just wondering, comparing it to, was it compared to anything across, across the state that we knew of, the PVPC? Did they come in and say, hey, you know what, Hadley Mass is doing the same thing? Any, any, any conversations like that?
Um, if I can defer by suspension of the rules to Marcos Marrero who's here, um, he had, um, the most, I guess, to, to say about that.
Second.
I can't see him. Oh, there he is.
Marcos, without, without, I'm just, Marcos, before you start talking, we have to have a motion to suspend the rules to allow Marcos.
I did, I did motion that.
Second.
I know, I know you didn't make that motion, but I just wanted to point out, I want to just be cautious in that, you know, now I am starting to be a little bit sensitive to the time that we are now 45 minutes in. And if each little point, we're going to go back and forth with various department heads. I just, just want to make that as an observation.
I didn't want to...
We do have a long agenda and, um, you know, it's fine if we, you know, Kara, that was a technical legal point, I get it. But now we're starting to go back and forth into the nuances of how we got to where we are today. So I just want to be mindful. Motion on the floor is to suspend the rules to allow Marcos Marrero to address the city council on this issue. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So moved. Marcos, please answer Counsel Brezner's question to the best of your human ability.
Uh, mo- most of the ordinance is actually based on our own ordinances and what we would require of any parking lot as part of any new development. So, I mean, even the language that's been stricken here today, there's, there's really nothing that's considerably new. It's making sure that everything is transparently provided to someone who is, um, seeking to do a, a, a parking lot. Yes, we often look at other ordinances in other cities and towns. The absence of those ordinances in those cities and towns doesn't mean it's a bad idea. Sometimes we're actually leaning on doing something even better. Um, I couldn't tell you right now what those cities and towns are. I didn't come prepared to discuss this today, but yes, certainly, we're looking at the best practices that's been followed other places that have been aggregated, uh, by the PVPC and, but mostly, as I said, we're, we're just looking at our own ordinances and what we're already requiring.
And, and I, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. And the reason I asked that is because I knew the answer to it. The answer was no. Okay? We're, you know, again, we're, I'm, this was great work.
That's not the answer I gave.
I know, I know it's not the answer you gave. Well, can you tell me what, I mean, I don't, I don't want to get into it, Marcos, I can certainly call you personally. But I want the public to know that, again, the city of Hoyok is creating a special permit for a parking lot. Okay, so I mean, I, I just, I, I thought, I think it's great work and with all due respect to the committee and all the meetings you had, I mean, the, the great thing about being televised is you can record them, you can watch them, you can re-watch them. You know, you don't necessarily have to physically show up, Counsel Vagan, to be aware of, of the topic of discussion, you know, because it is televised. All the meetings are televised. And again, you can't record them and watch them. So, uh, my point is that, I'm just, you know, and this, this, all I'm going to say about this matter for the rest of the night, rest assured, is that I just don't like special permit. Don't like it. I don't think we should have special permits at all. I mean, I just don't see, I, you know, I'd like to, you know, there's laws on the books throughout the state on different communities that do that. And again, we got another special permit, the stormwater drain, you know, there's, there's 15 grand. They gotta get an engineer for that. Talk to the business community, make them aware, make them aware. See what their opinion is of going to the planning board and all that, getting permits. It's not, it's not conducive. And I just don't like the fact that we're gonna, and this is, you know, one, basically because of one instance, we're going to create a law for a special permit, a five-page document for a parking lot, you know, that we're, they gotta put, you know, it, it's just, it's, it seems absurd. And I don't mean that with any sort of disrespect to the committee members, the economic board... And I don't mean that with any sort of disrespect to the committee members, the economic board. I mean, overall, we've got more special permits than anyone. I mean, it's our favorite word in the City of Hoyok is special permits. I mean, you know, if we really want to be business friendly, let's kind of steer away from that. Thank you.
We're still at first reading, ladies and gentlemen, and is there any other thoughts, conversations, discussions? Counselor Lisi?
So I just wanted to make loud and clear, the response that Marcos gave is not that we're leading the way and we are crafting something new out of our own, you know, you know, just out of our own minds. The best practices from other communities across the state have been synthesized by the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and those recommendations were forwarded to us in the, um, Hoyok parking plan.
All right. Very good. Any other thoughts? Okay, motion. Okay, Counselor McGivern?
Procedure, Mr. President, and the, um, we're in a gray area on the legal form. I would just suggest that the City's listener provide us with an initial line, whatever draft she's created over there as we made these amendments, and that we can, um, have that with our package. So when we, we can look up the legal form, once it's, uh, once it's completed, we'll just know that we're all on the same page and be no, no, uh, second guessing down the road.
Right. And there'll be a final, yeah, the final amended version that we end up signing. If you just forward back a copy of that, you could get with the administrative assistant and the clerk on those amendments. I also have been doing mightily my best to write down the amendments and writing them into the final version so that, uh, whenever we get to that stage, assuming this is adopted.
On the motion.
Okay, so, uh, we are now on adoption of the first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Second.
Okay, motions been made and seconded to adopt the second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Second.
Okay, motions been made and seconded that the passage be ordained. There is no further discussion. The clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of adopting this zoning ordinance change, which I remind you requires a two-thirds vote of the body. That is 10 votes. A no vote is to deny. Clerk will call the roll, please.
McGee? McGivern?
Yes.
Soto? Tommen?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Bartley?
Counselor Bartley?
Uh, no.
Presnahan?
No.
Shatner? Jordan?
Yes.
Leahy?
No.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
Nine yeas and four naes, nine yeas and four naes.
By your vote, the motion, the amendment fails.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We have one, uh, member absent. Can we take the vote again when they return? Is that possible?
We could.
Under motion to reconsider? Or could they request their vote?
We could.
Seems only fair, we put all this time into it and we're not going to have a vote tonight.
Sure. Well, it just require a motion to reconsider, that's all, okay? So if, uh, Counselor, when she comes back, uh, somebody make a motion to reconsider. And if a majority says yes, then we will go back to take another roll call, uh, on that. Still require two-thirds vote, but it'll only be a majority vote to reconsider.
Mr. President?
Yes, Counselor Leahy?
While we're waiting for that, can you give us an update on Counselor, uh, Grainey?
Yeah, thank you. Um, Counselor Grainey just stated that he was unfortunately unable to come. Uh, thank you for reminding me because I was about to mention that after this, and of course, that turned into 50 minutes. Uh, but yes, Counselor Grainey unfortunately could not be here this evening. He did say that he would definitely be here in two weeks, and, uh, he gives his best to everyone.
Can I make a motion to send, uh, a gift card or flowers for the flower fund to his house?
Uh, we can discuss that offline, yeah. I would feel best if we do that. Um, Counselor McGee?
Have, have we moved on to the next item, or?
Yes, we are, sir. We're at 13, we're on 13B now.
Before we get there, can I make a motion to suspend the rules and take a grant from Finance that is time-sensitive?
Second.
All right. Uh, motion has been made and seconded to remove an item from committee. You want to hand me the, uh, the item?
Yeah.
We'll have to deal with that at one moment. Uh, okay. Uh, Counselor McGee has made a motion to remove from committee an item, uh, that was originally introduced by Counselor McGee. That in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, the City Council hereby accepts the provisions of the TDI placemaking grant, authorizes the establishment of a fund or other method appropriate for the accounting of the receipts and expenditures of all resources associated with the administration of that grant. That came into council on August the 4th and was sent to Finance.
Yeah, if I can make another motion to suspend the rules, allow Marcos to speak.
Well, how about, uh, motion on the floor right now is to remove it from committee.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of removing from committee?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. It's now before the body. Would you like to make a motion to pass first reading?
Yes, please. Make a motion to pass first reading.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the first reading on adoption of this, uh, and the acceptance of this grant. Uh, that has been seconded. Under discussion, Counselor McGee?
Yeah, this came in after our last Finance meeting and as a late file in the full meeting. So, um, Marcos asked if we could take it up tonight. It's a grant for 7,500. They applied for the max, which was 10,000, but got 7,500. There is no city match.
Okay.
So that, that's one issue. Um, really what the grant is designed to do is provide, uh, within a certain radius, and he'll tell us the, the locations, uh, putting in types of benches or art-type benches and stuff, um, in order to help those areas and, and expand from there. The, the issue is there is a time limit of which, um-
We're getting close.
Yeah, so he's here, I don't want to keep him any longer. I, I thought we'd be a little quicker, so that's why I'm just taking it up now.
So you're seeking to suspend the rules to allow Marcos to address the council. Uh, and there's a second to that?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to allow Marcos Marrero to approach the City Council to discuss this grant. Uh, all in favor of that? Aye. Opposed? So moved. Marcos, if you could just give us a brief description of, uh, this 7,500 dollar grant, please.
Thank you. I didn't think I was going to be here more than Kara tonight. So, thank you all. Uh, the Transformative District Initiative was approved last summer by the state to create, uh, to recognize certain districts, districts throughout the state and provide more targeted assistance, either technical assistance, uh, grants or investments, uh, on behalf of, uh, or through mass development. Hoyok was recognized as one of the 10 transformative districts that encompasses, uh, the area between Maple and Main Streets, Dwight and Appleton Streets and the properties that are facing it. Uh, you'll recognize it as a lot of the area that's getting, um, a lot of infrastructure and private development, uh, over the past, uh, couple of years. We applied to this, uh, grant program that was available, as Counselor McGee said, uh, the max, uh, was $10,000. Uh, we received $7,500, um, as a placemaking project. We put a call for out, uh, call for art out, uh, to do a series of benches. It's movable furniture, uh, that could be, uh, located, uh, throughout the transformative district, throughout the, the first and second phases of the Canal Walk, uh, and can be used for festivals. The reason for, uh, the timing being an issue is that in our proposal to mass development, um, we, uh, our proposal was to unveil them at Next Stop, uh, Next Stop Hoyok, uh, which has occurred, started last year, uh, in October, and this year in October, it's going to happen again. Uh, the, the timeline is tight just to fabricate the, uh, the product. So that's, that's what we're facing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor McGivern?
Marcos, who's going to be in charge of the inventory and where will it be kept when not in use?
Uh, we will, we will either warehouse it at the DPW or we would be able to warehouse it with a private party. It's meant to be a, a one-time thing in that we're not, we're not going to replace them necessarily when they, when they get damaged. It is, that's the type of thing with, with placemaking, you, you make a celebratory, unique, uh, piece. But we do have space to, to, uh, store them. These won't be like hundreds of pieces or dozens of pieces. We're looking at somewhere around four, four pieces.
You're going to warehouse them with a private party?
Uh, part of, part of placemaking is making sure that the people in the community are attentive to the pieces and before, because they are, um, uh, they, they are in the district, uh, and movable. Um, uh, yes, that is something that, that could be agreed to. Uh, for example, they, they could be anchored down and providing keys to certain, to certain people in the, in the community to make sure that they're safe over the winter, uh, under some sort of agreement or MOU. Um, if there isn't, if they're, for any reason, there, there isn't space at the DPW, but we believe there is.
And they're available to anyone who asks?
These, these are meant to be outside at all times. It's not, it's not meant to be stored and only taken out for certain occasions. They're meant to be out at all times and publicly available, yes.
But if they're movable in another private party wishes to use them, are they available to them?
Yes, they're, they're available to everyone. They would be in the public right of way. It wouldn't be like, you know, take them home, and they would be pretty heavy to move if you wanted to.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to state, I, I spoke with Marcos, uh, earlier today, and I think it's important that we do this. It's, it's, uh, there's no match. I think it's good for the community in this downtown area to have this, uh, this grant. How can you, how can you turn it down? I really, uh, ask my colleagues to support this initiative.
Any other thoughts? Okay. We're at first reading on this. All in favor of adoption of the first reading?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Motion's been made and seconded to adopt the second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of adoption of this grant. A no vote is to deny it.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Thinking. Yes.
Soto? Tommen?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Presnahan?
Yes.
Shatner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you have approved the grant, uh, as articulated previously. Marcos, we wish you well. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcos.
Uh, we're now up to item number 13B.
Could we make a motion to reconsider the item before?
Second.
Say, motion has been made and seconded to reconsider our final vote.
13A.
Uh, which is on adoption of 13A. Um, is there a second to that?
Second.
Second. Okay. All in favor of reconsidering our final action on item number 13A?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So moved. Okay, we are now at the vote on adoption. Uh, there is, as we recall, no further debate allowed under the rule. So we're now at the final vote, uh, on adoption of item number 13A, the parking zoning regulation changes. Okay? Clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is on adoption and in favor in adopting these new, uh, requirements as we've discussed this evening. A no vote is to deny the-
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Soto? Tommen?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
Presnahan?
Nope.
Shatner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Leahy?
No.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
Eleven yeas and three naes.
By your vote, you've approved the new parking regulations.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. We now are on to 13B. 13B is a report of the Committee on Ordinance, to whom was referred an order that a no parking sign from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM be placed near 9 St. James Avenue. Have considered the same, recommend that it be adopted, and it's signed off by all five members of the ordinance committee.
Motion to pass the first reading?
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to pass the first reading. Under discussion, Counselor Lisi?
Um, I think the order is pretty straightforward, and I would defer to, um, Counselor McGee and Jordan as the makers, um, if they'd like to add anything else about this order.
Yeah, I, uh, you want me to, yeah, just, I'll just weigh in briefly. A factual point is that we have a business that's there. I want to, one, thank the ordinance committee for its swift action on this, much appreciated by this business. They're having a very difficult time having delivery trucks turn into the manse or holden, uh, building that's there. And, uh, this is just, they need this in order to function. And, uh, from, you know, this will not, it stops at 4:00 PM, so if people want to park there at night, it's fine. But it's just during business hours, they need to have it clear for the, you know, tractor-trailer trucks and other type, large commercial vehicles to get in out and make deliveries and pick up merchandise and go in and out as, as they do. So this business would greatly appreciate this, uh, very much. Counselor McGee?
I just want to thank the ordinance committee and thank you for, uh, in essence, getting this done as fast as possible. I, I know you, the ordinance is busy, and this was filed relatively recent. But as I mentioned when I was, uh, talking to other members, this man had to have three trucks in one week go away and not get his material in order to work because of the parking issue there. He's also told the residents, well, one, you can park in your driveway, you can park on the street, you have every right, but please allow my trucks come in, park in my lot, which is right next door. So he's offering up his spaces to be used as well, so he's, he's doing whatever he can. But the problem is, if we don't put this sign up, three trucks every week of shipments trying to, so he can do his business. He's going to go out of business. So he's, he's just asking for some type of help, temporary, so it doesn't really impact the, the neighborhood, and this is the best thing we can do.
Counselor McGee?
So thank you to everyone. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor McGee.
Is the language making this a toe zone? Because if it's not a toe zone, it's not going to work. It's, they're just going to be able to ticket them.
I think it'll be under the general ordinances of ticketing. It, I don't know, we didn't make it a toe zone.
A couple of tickets will probably work.
Yeah, exactly.
But that means a couple of trucks will be turned away.
Right.
Maybe that'll be a future order. If it, uh, we see continued non-compliance after the signs go up, then maybe we may get into, uh, give people the hook as well if they don't, uh, a hit in the pocketbook don't seem to work. Um, okay, any further discussion? All in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Counselor Lisi, second reading?
Motion to pass second reading.
Second.
Okay, motions been made and seconded to pass the second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to the passage be ordained. There is no further discussion. The clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of adopting the ordinance change, and no vote is to deny it.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Soto? Tommen?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Presnahan? Shatner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your unanimous vote, you've approved that ordinance change. Thank you very much, counselors. And moving on to item number 13C is a report from the Committee on Ordinance, to whom was referred an order that the City Council amend where necessary. The Hoyok Code of Ordinances, including Chapter 14 Animals, Chapter 1, Sections 1 through 10 Enforcement and Penalties, enact any additional ordinances if essential in order to bring the Hoyok Code of Ordinances into compliance with the amended Massachusetts General Laws pursuant to Chapter 193, Senate Bill 2192, and act further regulating animal control. Furthermore, until such amendments are adopted, where the Hoyok Code of Ordinances conflicts with the current Massachusetts General Laws as amended by the Act, the animal control officer and any and all other Hoyok personnel and officers must follow the Massachusetts General Laws. Have considered the same, recommend that the order be adopted as amended. All five members of the ordinance committee. Counselor Lisi?
Motion that the, um, motion to pass the first reading.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to pass the first reading on this ordinance change. Under discussion, Counselor Lisi?
Thank you. Um, in the interest of time, um, we were mailed an extensive packet of, um, changes to this chapter. Um, this file, this order was filed about two years ago by Counsel Jordan, and the Law Department has been, um, chipping away at it because the Massachusetts General Law, um, Chapter 193 and Senate Bill 291, um, created some statewide changes to regulating animal control. Um, and we needed to bring the city into compliance with those state changes. There was some delay because, um, we had the passing of, um, Don Tyron, the previous animal control officer, um, and we had some vacancies in the legal department. But since then, um, Will Newcomb and Eric Velez, our animal control officer, um, crafted a comprehensive animal control policy, um, that really just reorganizes the previous ordinances and brings parts that were not in compliance with the state's, um, bill up to date with the state's laws. Um, most of the, um, changes had to do with how nuisance and vicious dogs are handled. and vicious dogs are handled. Um, and other than that, it was just a reorganization. Is there any particular questions? I'm happy to answer them.
Anything else? Hearing none. All in favor of adopting, passing the first reading?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved?
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to the passage be ordained. Any further, uh, actually, I should stop there. Uh, any, passage be ordained. There is no further discussion. The clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in, on adoption of the ordinance changes, and no vote is to deny.
McGee? McGivern?
Yes.
Soto? Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Brezner, Bartley?
Yes.
Brezneren?
Yes.
Shatna?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you unanimously approved the ordinance changes articulated in item number thirteen C. Brings us now to item number thirteen D. The Committee on Ordinance, to whom was referred a communication from Jeffrey Burcott and the legal department regarding office of planning and development letter, RE site plan review for the Hoeyok Medical Center, five seventy-five Beet Street, have consider, have considered the same, recommend that the communication has been complied with, and it is signed off by all five members of the ordinance committee.
Motion to receive and adopt.
Motion's been made and seconded that the committee report be received and adopt, and that the communication has been complied with. Under discussion, Counselor Lisi.
Um, just very briefly, um, there was a site plan review for Hoeyok Medical Center that came through as a communication to the city council, and I think that a number of councilors were concerned about some new development projects, um, and perhaps this site plan review being under the purview of a prior, um, special permit that was granted. Um, we checked it out in ordinance, and it's not, and some of the other issues related to the new development are being addressed with an order that Counselordane filed. So we felt that we checked it out, and it was good to give complied with.
Yep, agreed. Thank you. I appreciate the committee taking a look at that, and, um, we'll tackle those other zoning ordinance issues down the road, hopefully soon. Uh, any other discussion thoughts on this? All in favor that this committee report be complied, adopted such that it's been complied with?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved? Counselor Brezneren, do you have something for us?
Uh, yes, I'd like to take a matter that's actually not on the agenda with respect to a, uh, special permit.
So a motion to remove an item from the Public Service Committee?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to remove an item regarding a home occupation special permit from the Public Service Committee. Um, would you like me to, why don't I read that?
Sure.
Thank you. The Committee on Public Service, to whom was referred an application of Mr. Jaelson Varela of two twenty-one Francis Avenue for a home occupation special permit for a painting business. The committee originally recommended adoption with six different conditions. Um, this was sent up to the city council on or about, uh, our, our second meeting in June, and it was referred back to committee because it was determined that the gentleman does in fact not own the property. Uh, he is not one of the record owners. And the committee, uh-
We had a public hearing, and we closed it on fort, in the-
So let me just make one thing here. So, uh, the, the reason why this is, presents itself to, to, to be coming before the body now is since that action took place in June, there is a ninety-day requirement to take up final action. Therefore, it would just be automatically granted if the council doesn't take some action by, uh, the requisite time in September. So therefore, uh, it needs to come out of committee. Um, and this was discussed with the law department. So all in favor of removing for commit, from committee for discussion?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved? Uh, under discussion, uh-
Briefly, the, the long and short is that-
Do you have a motion, by the way?
Uh, a motion to deny this request for a special permit.
Second.
Second. Okay, motion's been made and seconded that the, uh, home occupation permit be denied. Under discussion, Counselor Brezneren.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, to be brief, the gentleman that came before us, the applicant came before us, we specifically asked, you don't have to own the property to get a special permit if you want to do a business out of your home. We specifically asked him, do you own the property? He said yes. Upon further research, um, it was determined that he did not own the property. Um, and there was, we did a little bit of a, little bit of a research, and there was other properties maybe in out-of-towns that he may have owned. I don't, we don't, you know, in the past. So we contacted him multiple times and asked him to either bring a driver's license in, a gas and electric bill, some sort of indication that he was in fact living at the residence that he had put on the application. Um, we haven't gotten that information to date, and now we're, we're pressed to make a move on this. Um, I'm hoping that if he does reapply, and he has that right to, perhaps that the city clerk will be kind enough to maybe waive his fees because there may have been a, a misunderstanding or miscommunication from, you know, this department to that department type of an issue. So, um, at this point, we're just going to, we'd like to deny it because we don't know in fact that he's residing at this residence. Thank you.
The, the other point is, I think we want to preserve our procedural rights. The gentleman is not precluded. There's no like, he can't reapply for two years or any of that. He can come back if he wants to pursue this and make another reapplication to the city council. Um, and so we'll say at this point, uh, the reason, we should state some reasons for denial. One of which is nonresponsiveness to the, uh, application process, and therefore, uh, it's potentially not in the best interests of the neighborhood. Correct as well, those are the two reasons for denial. But he can come back and, uh, make that application, uh, in, in the future. Counselor McGivern? I, I don't have a problem with the, the reasons for, for denying, but the public hearing went very well. Yeah. With the exception of the, the question of ownership of the home. Most of the neighbors who came down asked questions. Their, when their questions were answers, the, uh, the majority of the neighbors that were here were in favor of the granting of the special permit. The, um, you know, the issue was ownership because I, I think it's important to understand who owns the property before a special permit can be issued, is the owner in favor of it, you know? And I think that's one thing, if it's not in our, in our ordinance, it should be in our ordinance. And I, I know we've been trying to get a hold of them since the, uh, the full city council, you know, you know, remanded it back to the, uh, to the committee. But if we can't get a hold of them, I think the reason for denial is we don't know who owns the property. We don't know the position of the person who owns the property pertaining to the special permit. And why I say potentially not in the best interests of the neighborhood, only using the word potentially is because you'd want the record owner be able to come down, speak, are they going to enforce all these conditions, all, all of that? I think that's the concern, is the level of enforcement if you don't have the record owner on board as well. I think that's some of the concerns, right? Yeah.
Point one, what they-
Yeah. Uh, Counselor Tomlin?
Uh, great points by Counselor McGivern. Just, uh, one concern I have is in the future, if he does come down and reply again, will he have to publicize in the newspaper again? Since we already did, we already had the public meeting. He'll have to do that again?
Probably.
Could that be a cut?
I would, I would assume so, yeah.
Okay. That's my only question.
Maybe we can work with them on the application fee, though.
Okay.
I'd certainly be in favor of waiving that if there's any way to do it. Okay. Uh, this is now before the body. Motion on the floor is to deny for the reasons stated earlier. Uh, any other questions? Hearing none. A yes vote is in favor of denying the application. A no vote is to not deny and therefore approve the application. Clerk will call the roll, please.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Soto? Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
Yes, it's to deny. The committee report, the committee recommendation is to deny. Therefore, a yes vote would be to deny.
Sorry, thank you. Yes.
Brezneren?
Yes.
Make sure we're on the right, right page here.
Jordane?
Yes.
Leahy?
Counselor Leahy, yes vote is to deny the request, and no vote is to approve.
Did you just give me the number of which you requested?
Uh, this is the item regarding this home occupation permit for the gentleman that didn't respond to the committee information, additional information request.
So he didn't-
So, yeah, right. So the committee recommending right now to deny, a yes vote would deny it.
I go along with that.
So yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your unanimous vote, uh, the gentleman's, uh, home occupation permit is denied, but if he wishes to pursue and come back, he's more than welcome. All right. So this brings us now, there were no other committee reports for public safety service, development and government relations, and/or charter and rules, which now brings us to the motions, orders, and resolutions section of the, of the meeting, and that brings us now to item number nineteen. Order introduced by Counselor McGee that Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A, uh, the city council hereby accept the provisions of the hazardous materials emergency preparedness grant, authorizes the establishment of a fund or other method appropriate for the accounting and receipts and expenditures of all resources associated with the administration of that grant.
Finance?
Okay.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to receive and refer nineteen to finance. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Nineteen to finance. Item number twenty.
Abbreviated reading, Mr. President.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules to allow an abbreviated reading of item number twenty. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved? Item number twenty. Is this going to finance, by the way?
Well, that's, if you'd like, I can ask a question.
Is it, is there a time sensitive?
That, if I can-
Under discussion, Counselor McGee.
Thank you. Um, this is, in February, we approved a bond for seven hundred and fifty thousand for new boilers at Morgan and Ian White.
Yes.
Of which the school department came in and told us all the details to it. This is now an additional one ninety-four with regards to those same systems. They did put a report on my desk of all the different costs associated with it, and, you know, the state does reimburse us, uh, with regards to this. The issue is, I asked members of the audience, I went out in the hall, I went through all my files. The only thing I have is an email from Bellamy saying, just a heads up, they're going to be filing this bond. I asked the school to contact you, but I'm just letting you know. I have no communication from the school, so I don't know if it's time sensitive. I mean, in essence, we won't take this up until October in a full city council meeting. It's for boilers, it's the school system. There is a reimbursement by the state. Do we just pass it, or do we want to bring them in for questions? I, I leave it up to the board.
Well, we do have a meeting on the fifteenth, too.
If we can do that.
Potentially.
Yeah.
You know, if the finance meets between-
Todd, a motion to table?
Well, I just, well, send it to finance, and we can have it in finance. I just wanted to make sure I understood the issues to it.
All right, why don't we do this? Uh, send it to finance, and then we can pull it out for the next meeting if, uh, if it is time sensitive, or perhaps the committee will meet between the, now and the fifteenth, and then, uh, we can have them in.
No, I just wanted to make sure everyone knew the details. All right, thank you.
Great. Nobody has contacted me, by the way, from the schools regarding this item, so couldn't be that quote-unquote urgent because generally, they're pretty good about contacting, uh, to say, you know, we'd step on the gas on something. All right, so a motion on the floor is to receive, uh, item number twenty, which is, as stated earlier, uh, requesting to appropriate an additional one hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars for some school department repairs at Morgan and Ian White. Uh, motion on the floor is to refer twenty to finance. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. President, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, take up as a package.
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to take twenty-one through twenty-three up as a package. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved? Twenty-one is that, all, these are, all three are introduced by Counselor McGee. Uh, all related to the DPW. Twenty-one is replace the broken berm at the corner of Bemis and West Meadow View Road. Twenty-two is the DPW repair the sidewalk at two forty-six West Franklin. Twenty-three is the DPW cut back the overgrowth of grass trees, et cetera, near eighty-eight Jarvis Avenue. Homeowners are having trouble seeing cars coming around the bend. Uh, Counselor, if it's okay, I'd like to be added as a spot, co-sponsor to twenty-two.
Sure.
That saves me filing an order. Thank you. Adding Counselordane's name to item number twenty-two. Uh-
Mr. President.
What, uh, yes, Counselor Tomlin?
If the council has in mind, uh, if you could add me to number twenty-one?
Sure.
Been in touch with some people up in that area that, you know, needed some repairs up there in the berm.
Okay, without objection, adding Counselor Tomlin's name to item number twenty-one. Uh, do you have a motion on this, Counselor?
Receive, adopt, send to DPW.
Okay, motion on the floor is to receive, adopt all three, and refer all three to the DPW, uh, department. Under discussion, Counselor McGee. No discussion. Speaks for themselves. Uh, any other discussion from anyone else? Hearing none. All in favor of adopting these three orders?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number twenty-four. Thank you, sir. Item number twenty-four, that the city council invite in the DPW engineer to discuss and update the council on the brick building at McKenzie Field and the plans for repairing it, not removing it as part of the bond.
Uh, finance, please?
Okay, can I add my name to this as well? Yeah, adding Counselordane's name to this, and adding Counselor Soto's. Yeah, adding Counselor Soto's as we, we need to get, figure out what they're going to do with that because I, I was under the original understanding it was going to be part of that bond. So, uh, Councilors McGee, Jordane, and Soto, the council, uh, adopt this, uh, and you want to refer to a committee, or?
Finance.
Oh, refer to finance, okay. Motion on the floor is refer this order to finance. Any discussion? Counselor Bartley?
Thanks.
Counselor Bartley?
Can I just ask Todd a question?
Yeah, sure.
Through the chair? So Todd, I-
Through the chair.
Todd, um, can you just clarify that? Because I, the part that says, um, the brick building, the plans for repairing it and not removing it as part of the bond, how, you're, you're aware there's not going to remove that building or, or fix it as part of the bond package?
If I may, the bond package, in essence, said that they were going to, as part of the presentation for the bond, was that they're going to fix up that building and, you know, keep it. There has been ongoing rumors, that's why I want to bring them in, that it might be taken down. That could be totally false. So instead of going around, we'll just have them come in. And the other issue is, we have to remember, this bond was approved by us a long time ago.
That's right.
Of which it's been delayed and delayed till finally, it was June of this year that it was finally done by bond council. So there's been such a delay, they really can't do work until spring of next year. However, they're going to be doing the planning phase from now up until then, so we really should know exactly what they're going to do with this because sometimes we think they're going to do one thing, and then lo and behold, it changes. So we'll just get them in, get the answers, and if it's not rumor, then we'll have some discussions.
Counselor Bartley?
May I?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I, I, so I hear you on that. So I, I don't think we've seen any engineering, I haven't seen any, any engineering plans whatsoever on, on any of this two-point, whatever it is, million-dollar bond for, so there may be numerous things that are may, we may or may not like, including this.
There's no, there's no plans.
There's no plan whatsoever, okay.
I'm having them come in because it's been such a long timeframe since then, and now there's speculation on different things. This is just one of them. We'll bring them in. I don't know if there are, I don't know if engineering needs to be here, but I just threw them in there just in case. Now, if DPW just comes in and says, we'll talk about it, that's what we'll do.
So may I offer a friendly amendment, Todd?
Sure, sure.
Just, just, uh, urge the DPW to provide some plans, or, or provide a timeline when plans are going to be provided relative to this, because we're, we're all in the dark. I mean, we, we know why this was sat on, um, for a while. I mean, we're all, everybody's very aware of that. Why, who sat on it, and, well, we don't know why, but we know who sat on it. But we now, we now know bond council's approved it. So may I just amend it to say that the, um, Kevin, just so you can write it, uh, that the DPW slash engineer provide plans or an update to us as, to, to the finance committee when the plans are going to be provided?
And, and just on that, if we do it that way, there are no plans yet, which then they could say, well, we'll have to wait till December, January. To me, bring them in now, tell us our viewpoints, then they can say what they're looking to put into the plan.
I agree.
If it says that, under-
Maybe it's part of the discussion, Todd. Maybe, and maybe I'm overthinking it, so I just, just want to get something on paper, so forth. All right, thank you, sorry.
May I offer a friendly suggestion to the spirit of what you're just saying is that your amendment would say that the DPW provide plans to the finance committee as well as a timeline? I believe that's the other point you mentioned, right?
Yeah, that was-
Okay, so that's amendment offered by Counselor Bartley. Is that seconded? That's seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved? So the order is now amended. Motion on the floor now is to refer to the finance committee with a copy to the DPW and whoever's the acting city engineer at the moment. Um, so, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Off to finance. Item number twenty-five comes to us from Counselor McGee, that the police department place radar and, uh, speed reader signs on Dartmouth as well as provide a traffic report to public safety.
Uh, receive, adopts, send to the police department. And it's really that radar machine that speed limit sign. I really didn't know the term that they use for that box.
Speed trailers.
Speed trailers, there we go. Thank you, Counselor.
So you want to send it to the police department with a copy to public safety?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion on the floor that's been made and seconded is to receive. Item number twenty-five, refer to the police department with a copy to public safety. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Just a comment, Mr. President?
Yes, Counselor Walton.
I've actually, I've requested this in Ward Four numerous times, and Sergeant Loftus and I are talking about these things all the time. So, just so you all know, if you have a specific area in your ward that you're worried about in terms of speeding, my experience with him is if you just email him and say, "This is the location," he actually has a queue of, you know, future locations, and you just get on that list, and it's that easy. So, it's, to me, it's easier than just kind of going the order way, but just so you know, it's, it's, it's pretty simple.
Very good. Thank you. Item number twenty-six comes to us from Counselor Soto, that the building department come before the city council to inform us of all citations issued from January two thousand fifteen to August thirty-first, two thousand fifteen.
Receive, send to public service, please.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to receive. Refer to the public service committee with a copy to the building department. Under discussion, Counselor Soto.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I've been traveling around the city and speaking with different businesses and people in the community, we have a lot of concerns of what's going on at that building department, so I'd like to have them come in and discuss these issues as early as possible. So I'm gonna work with the chair of that committee that we get this done ASAP.
Mr. President?
Yes, Counselor Walton.
I'm wondering if Counselor Soto means public safety, because public service with the building department, I'm not sure there's a connection there. Are there concerns regarding safety?
Public service, it's going to public service, Counselor Vacan, thank you.
Counselor Vacan?
Valentine, thank you.
Oh, okay.
That's fine. I mean, usually, public service also rates the internal affairs of the department. Either, either one, I think, would work. Okay, so motion on the floor is to receive, refer to public service with a copy to the building department. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item number twenty, huh?
You got vote with one, nothing.
Oh, that passes, right?
Unanimous.
Unanimous, thank you, absolutely. Item number twenty-seven comes to us from Counselor Vacan, that a stop sign be installed at Ashley Road and two-oh-two.
Receive and refer to ordinance, please.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive and refer twenty-seven to ordinance. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Oh, Counselor Alexander, I'm sorry.
I did just have a quick question. Through the chair to Counselor Vacan, isn't that already a T-intersection?
It is, and the recommendation from the police department is that it should have a stop sign there.
So, my understanding, though, is if it's a T, it is a required legal stop, so there's no ordinance change required for the sign?
I was advised that there was an ordinance needed to place the sign.
I don't, I mean, you can go to committee, but I don't think that's true. I think we'll find out. It just needs to go to DPW.
Okay. Hopefully, we'll have it back in two weeks.
I already investigated that route. Thank you.
Thank you for being very thorough. Item number twenty-eight is introduced by Counselor Vacan, that a traffic study be completed to determine if a three-way stop should be installed at Ashley and Pearson Road.
Receive and refer to the police department for a traffic study, please.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to receive, refer to the police department for a traffic study. Under discussion, or speaks for itself?
Yes, it's just to try to get control of the cutting through and the speeding in the area.
Okay.
And so, it's one consideration to try to get control in there.
Okay.
The neighbors are also considering the speed hump option, so we're just trying to do something to slow it down in there. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor of receiving and referring this order to the police department?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item number twenty-nine is an order introduced by Counselor Bartley, ordered that due to traffic and speed concerns, the city council order the HPD to deploy necessary resources in Laurel Street, Willow Street, View Street, Glen Street, and Brown Avenue areas.
Kevin, can we take twenty-nine and forty, because you have a very similar order? Can we take those as a package?
Sure.
I'm just gonna refer it to HPD and public safety, if it's, if you're okay with it.
Motion to suspend the rules to take up items twenty-nine and forty as a package. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Also moved. Item, agenda item number forty is introduced by Kevin Jordan, order that the police do speed traps on West Franklin Street and issue tickets, please. The speeding is out of control, so we'll add that.
Just send it to HPD with a copy to public safety?
Yep. Okay, motion has been made and seconded to take both items twenty-nine and forty, to adopt them, refer them both to the police department with copies back and, or reports back to the public safety committee. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Mr. President, motion to suspend and take thirty and thirty-one as a package with abbreviated reading?
Second. Okay, motion to suspend the rules to take up thirty and thirty-one as a package with an abbreviated reading. All in favor of that rule suspension?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item number thirty is that the city council, in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter Thirty-B in the procurement ordinance, vote to accept an offer of United Renovations Doing Business as Specialty Loose Leaf to purchase a parcel of land located at One Cabot Street for ten thousand dollars. It then goes on to give the legal description and states that the property at one time was assessed at four-hundred-and-forty, approximately four-hundred-and-forty-one thousand dollars. Item number thirty-one is also to accept a offer to purchase from Hoyok Medical Center, a parcel of land and building located at two-forty-five High Street for five thousand dollars. This parcel and building are currently assessed at one-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand dollars approximately. The mayor has recommended adoption of both of these offers, and they are now before the body for some consideration.
Motion to send to Development and Governmental Relations, please.
Okay, motion is to receive items thirty and thirty-one and refer both to the Development and Government Relations Committee. Any discussion? Counselor McGivern?
A procedural question, Mr. President. I, in one of these items, at least, I don't believe we've ever declared them surplus.
Which one was that, sir?
On One Cabot Street.
One Cabot?
We've had a lot of discussion on that in the past. Hidic has had a lot of involvement in the discussion, but I don't think, I don't recall taking a vote to declare either of these surplus.
Counselor.
Could be wrong.
May I? Two-forty-five High, for sure. That was absolutely declare surplus in this body. One Cabot, I'm gonna, my memory isn't, is lacking in One Cabot, so.
You'll investigate, I'm sure, before that committee meeting.
I will.
That'll make it a quick discussion if it hasn't.
And I will, I will email every counselor here with what was said.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Great job, Dave.
Alright, Dave. Counselor Soto?
Number thirty-one, I believe I should abstain. I'm on the Board of Trustees at Hoyok Medical Center, for the record.
Okay, very good. Counselor Soto will be abstaining from any vote or consideration of item number thirty-one, as he's a member of the Board of Directors of the Hoyok Medical Center.
They're being taken up as a package, though.
I'm sorry?
They're taking, they're taken up as a package, however.
Okay, in this instance, we're referring it to committee, so in this, in this instance, you won't be voting on either thirty or thirty-one. Good point. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor referring thirty and thirty-one to the DGNR committee?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Motion to suspend the rules to take thirty-two and thirty-three as a package, Mr. President?
Motion's been made and seconded to take up items number thirty-two and thirty-three as a package. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item number thirty-two is introduced by Counselor Bartley as well as thirty-three, that no parking shall be allowed on the west side of Ray Street, abutting the canal walk from Dwight Street on the north to Appleton Street on the south. Item number thirty-three is that no parking be allowed on either side of Dwight Street, east of Main Street, as part of the Hoyok Rail Platform vehicular loop.
Ordinance, please, Mr. President?
Okay, motion on the floor is to receive both of these items and to refer them both to the ordinance committee. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Thirty-two, thirty-three, to ordinance. Item number thirty-four is an order introduced by Counselors Shatnoff and McGee, a speed sign be installed on Vadney Street, placed in such a way as so visible to the cars traveling down Vadney.
Receive, adopt, send to DPW?
Vacan.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive, adopt, and refer to the DPW to install this speed sign. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item number thirty-five is an order.
Abbreviated reading, Mr. President.
Counselor Jordan, yes. This is so that we can have our primary election on September twenty-second. It suggests to you that we will be having the polls open from seven AM in the morning to eight PM at night at our, all of our usual voting locations. No changes since the last election, I have been informed. So, motion on the floor would be to adopt item number thirty-five.
Motion to adopt, second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt item number thirty-five. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Get out and vote. That's right, get out and vote. Get to vote, yeah.
You are ordered to go vote for the city council. Item number thirty-six, order introduced by Counselor Jordan, order that the city forester please install a good shade tree, ideally a locust tree, in the tree belt in front of three-twenty-four McKenzie Avenue. Let her, uh...
Receive, adopt, refer to DPW and the city forester.
Thank you. Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second to receive, adopt, refer to the DPW and city forester. There is no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item number thirty-seven. Item number thirty-seven is an order introduced by Counselor Jordan, order that the DPW pull the stop sign forward on McKenzie Avenue, even to the stop line, perhaps putting a sign on the adjacent lamppost. The current configuration and location of the stop sign is inconsistent with the stop line and is causing confusion and danger for motorists.
Receive, adopt, refer to the DPW?
Motion's been made and seconded to receive, adopt, refer to the DPW. Just a brief description of this, counselors, is that the sign should be here, for whatever reason, they put it well past the stop line, and what people are doing is they're pulling up to the stop sign. And even though the stop line's back here and they're now in the middle of the intersection, which is right in front of traffic that's coming from Anderson Avenue, so it's very confusing. It does need to go back. And there's actually a great spot to put it.
Mr. President?
So, yes.
Just a little history lesson on that one. We had, you helped with it. We put the stop sign in coming from Locust into Anderson, because it used to be just a two-way stop sign.
Right.
Of which people were just flying through into Anderson, and you're right where that stop sign is. They were driving right up. That's what caused the serious problem. When they were putting that new stop sign, they left the stop sign you're talking about the way it is, because they said it was more appropriate there. So, well, no, I actually agree with you.
Right.
That it should be pulled back, or there should be a line, because you're going right through the intersection. You're already in the intersection before you're already stopping at the sign, so good order. It's just, it's just a history lesson. We've, I like to see the answer now.
Like a lot of these things, it has mileage on it, yeah. It was interesting, as I'm sitting there talking to some of the neighbors about this exact situation, like multiple people did exactly what they were describing, so it was like, wow, okay. So, all in favor of receiving, adopting, and referring to the DPW?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item number thirty-eight is an order introduced by Counselor Jordan, ordered that the city council rescind its January sixth, two thousand fifteen vote to place the following non-binding question on the Hoyok, on the November ballot. Should the city council, which is now fifteen members consisting of eight at-large and seven ward representatives, be reduced to thirteen members with six at-large and seven ward representatives? The question has become moot as a result of the council's approval of a special act creating a binding ballot question with nearly identical wording, as you'll recall. So, right now, this is just a housekeeping matter. We already have a binding question to do exactly this. Previously, before we ever passed this, we had passed a non-binding, so I was informed by the law department that this would be confusing to have the same question on the ballot, both binding and non-binding. So, therefore, this is a, yeah.
Motion to adopt.
Yeah. Motion is, is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded to adopt, which will be to rescind our prior vote of January sixth on this, on this item as described. Any discussion?
Aye.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item number, all in favor of two questions, saying the same thing. Item number thirty-nine. Item number thirty-nine is introduced by Counselor Jordan, ordered that the DPW replace the sidewalk on West Franklin Street between Locust and Linden Street on the odd side of the street. This request has been made for years, and these sidewalks are in terrible condition. So, motion has been, would request that be received and adopted to refer it over to the DPW, please.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second? All in favor of receiving, adopting, and referring over to the DPW?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item number forty-one is an order introduced by Counselor Jordan, ordered that the DPW install stickers on the guardrails at Saint Jerome and West Franklin Street to indicate that there is a turn. This request came in from residents there. They want more indication up ahead, especially at night, that there is in fact a turn before you go direct on into the guardrail. Request that this be received, adopted, and referred to the DPW.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item number forty-two.
Mr. President, I think, I think we skipped forty, the...
It's done.
We already adopted it.
Oh, that was the previous one that was packaged?
That was the combo one.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, yes, yep. Item number forty-two is an order introduced by Counselor Jordan, ordered that the DPW install a sewer drain on the street in front of one-thirty-eight Saint Jerome Avenue. The downstream flow of the stormwater from Saint Jerome Avenue towards West Franklin is flooding the property of certain homeowners.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Friendly amendment to storm drain?
To, oh, okay, yeah, sure. Yeah, install a storm drain, okay. Delete the word sewer, add the word storm in its place. All in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
So moved. Motion I would request is that this be received, adopted, and referred to the DPW and the sewer authority and commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item number forty-three is introduced by Counselor Jordan, ordered that the water department paint the hydrant in front of two-fifty-seven West Franklin Street, as well as fill the three potholes caused by their water shut-off valves in the street near the same address.
Motion to receive, adopt, and refer to the water department?
Okay, is there a second? Second?
Second.
Motion on the floor is to receive, adopt, and refer to the water department. Order speaks for itself. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Thank you. Item number forty-four is an order introduced by Counselors Jordan and McGee, ordered that the Hoyok Housing Authority Executive Director and Commission, please provide assigned parking in Bowden Village, especially in the areas of Elting Circle and Baradav, where parking is very tight and the residents often do not have access to even one parking space on their street at various times. The remaining spaces on the street should be marked for visitor.
Receive, adopt, refer to the housing authority.
Yes. Motion on the floor has been made and seconded to receive, adopt, and refer to the Hoyok Housing Authority Director and Commission. Under discussion, Counselor Vacan.
If the makers would allow me to be signed on, and if I could offer a friendly amendment that the assigned parking be numbered by apartment?
Exactly, yeah. So it'd be, if you're at number twenty-six Elting, you'll have a space that says twenty-six on it.
Right.
Yeah, that's the game plan, yeah.
Yeah, I guess there's been a lot of problems up there.
Yeah. So, that friendly amendment to make sure that we add the number, the assigned parking is by the number on, of your address on the street. All in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
Alright, so moved. Counselor Soto?
It's okay, I like to be cited on.
Sure. Adding Counselor Anthony Soto, who, by the way, was up there at Bowden Village as well as I recently, so I want to thank him for that, and happy to add Counselor Soto's name to this order. Basically, what it is, is folks there are making numerous concerns that seem extremely reasonable. There's more than enough spaces for everybody to get at least one, and therefore, the rest can be marked visitor. The problem is, certain individuals are taking many, many spots, especially if they're at social gatherings and otherwise, and everybody else is left to sort of fend for themselves, which means carrying your groceries a long distance, or if you have small children, or any of this. It's just, everybody, literally, everybody's in favor of this up there. So, this would be much appreciated to adopt. Counselor Vacan?
And I would just also comment that for people who live there that have to work the three-to-eleven shift, by the time they get home, they're walking blocks to get to their apartment, because all the spaces are gone. So it's a safety issue, too.
And the good news is, the Housing Commission says that they're very close to pulling this off, so I think we're gonna see some, some good success and movement. They're actually meeting on the third, which is two days from now, to discuss this item as well. So, all in favor of adopting and referring to the Housing Commission and Director?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item number forty-five is an order introduced by Counselors Jordan and McGee, ordered that the Housing Authority work with the DPW to install additional speed bumps near the beginning of Leary Drive. There are two speed bumps now, but both are located at the top of Leary Drive and none near the beginning of the street. The traffic is going too fast, and residents would like to see this installed. So the request would be to receive, adopt, refer to the Housing Authority as well as the DPW.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing? With a copy to the fire department? Sure, yeah. Men to send a copy also to the fire department, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Thank you. Item number forty-six is an order introduced by Counselor Jordan, and I would like to add Counselor LeBron Martinez, please, as a co-sponsor to this item. And that is that a handicap sign be placed in front of thirty-five Northeast And that is that a handicap sign be placed in front of 35 Northeast Street for a Lori Ann Bresnahan. And I would request that we send this to the Ordinance Committee with a copy to the Disabilities Commission.
So moved.
Okay? Uh, any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? So moved. Takes care of 46, which brings us now to item number 47. Item number 47 is an order introduced by Counselor Leahy, order that the Hoyok City Council give Via Whitman a proclamation to honor his 30 years of service and dedication to golf in the city of Hoyok. Within his career at Hoyok Country Club, Via has taught thousands of children in his junior golf program. It was one of the most successful summer programs in western Massachusetts. Via is being indu- inducted into the Western Mass Golf Hall of Fame on October 4th.
Receive, adopt, and have Ryan talk to our, uh, choreographer, or calligrapher?
Calligrapher, yes. We start dancing, we'll do choreography, too.
Under discussion, um...
Yeah, so, uh, motion is to receive and adopt this-
Yes.
-and refer to our, uh, proclamation maker. Under discussion, Counselor Leahy?
To be honest with you, I think she's on top of things, and I think it's already done, but we have to have an official-
She reads the orders in advance, yeah.
Yeah, she does.
She's on top of it.
She certainly is. No, but I, just very quickly, um, you know, I know David, and probably Joe, and Todd, and, uh, maybe some others, have golfed up there, um, for many, many years, and, uh, Via is, uh, one of the nicest guys you'll ever meet in your life. He's been a wonderful, a dedicated person, not only to the city of Hoyok, but to the youth of the, uh, and a lot of these kids now, some of these kids have gone pro, and, uh, many different great colleges because of the sport of golf. Um, you know, it's a hidden asset that we have in the city, and I just want to, just once again, say that I'm so honored to call Via a friend, and, uh, and I'll be there when he gets inducted to the, uh, the Mass Golf Hall of Fame. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing his name forward, Counselor McGee.
Just like to ask if I could sign on, um-
Really?
I'm not gonna confirm that I've taken golf lessons with Via, because I wouldn't do him justice by my game. It's awful.
Adding Counselor McGee's name as a cosponsor. Any other discussion? Counselor Soto?
I'd like to be added on to that, too.
Adding Counselor Soto's name as a cosponsor?
Did you know him?
I've hacked, I've hacked a couple things up there.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, thanks, Jim, for bringing this up, and I also knew Via, if you could add me on. Um, he taught my nephew, who is now a golf pro up in Belcher Town, uh, golfing.
That's your nephew?
He was state champ and a New England champ, so...
That's great, yeah.
Yeah, good golfer, and, and he learned a lot from Via, so...
Adding Counselor Tomlin's name as a cosponsor. Counselor Bartley?
I just want to make comment, and I'd like to add my name, too, but, and Pete's nephew is one of the finest young men you're gonna ever meet. He was a pro at HCC, but now he's a pro-
Better than Peter?
I, I, I won't comment, but I'm just saying, he's just a, a fine young man, and, uh-